Everyone, we're going to go ahead and start. We'd like to welcome everyone today. I am President Irene Bustamante Adams and call this regular Board meeting of June 12, 2025 to order. The time is 5:00 PM. I'd like to remind everyone to silence your electronic devices. We acknowledge that the land on which we are gathered is the territorial homeland of the new Wauwaaupaa Band of Paiyuts and the Las Vegas Band of Paiyuts. We'll start with our opening item, our flag salute. Trustee Bhasari, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We will move now to our next business item, 1.02, adoption of the agenda. Before I open that item, is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? It's a yellow piece of paper that we filled out if you'd like to speak.
You don't need to be on it for all of you.
That is correct. If you're already on the agenda, we do have speaker cards. They look like this. Or if you called in to get yourself on the list, you can. Okay, see, no one for agenda item 1.02. I'll close that. And trustee Baron, would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with the following changes. Reference material has been provided for 3.02 employment agreement, chief financial officer. Reference material has been provided also for 3.03 employment agreement, chief community engagement officer. And with that, that is my motion.
Thank you, trustee Esparta Strofigan.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Before I take the vote, I want to make sure we have three of our team members online. Vice President Zamora, are you on?
Good afternoon. I'm on.
Okay. Trustee Dominguez, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay. And trustee Cabasos, are you online? No. So she's shaking her head. Okay. So then I'm going to go ahead and ask the team to please cast your votes. Vice President Zamora?
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez?
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes six to zero. We'll go ahead to our business item 2.0. Before I open the consent agenda, is there anyone who did not get a chance to fill out a public speaker card? Okay, I'll close that out. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Trustee Satori?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as detailed.
Thank you. Trustee Stevens?
I second.
Okay, please cast your votes. Vice President Zamora?
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez?
Before I submit my vote, I'd like to make a statement, Madam President.
Please go ahead.
At this moment, I feel blocked from being able to ask questions during our trustee briefing of the consent agenda. Questions that matter to our families and schools I represent. The current process requires that any item I want to raise must be pre-approved by the board president or vice president. This creates a barrier for me to have an open dialogue and have accountability with our staff. This isn't about CCSD staff. It's always about, they're always willing to help us and support us. This is about a system that limits my ability to do my job that I was elected to do. My constituents deserve a representative who can ask the tough questions, seek transparency, and advocate on their behalf without unnecessary restrictions. This is not happening under the current structure, and I encourage other trustees to speak out against the limitation during our trustee briefing.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez. Trustee Cabasos, are you online?
Pardon, Madam President. I'm going to vote aye.
Thank you, trustee Dominguez. We'll go ahead and move forward. That motion passes... That motion passes six to zero. I'll go ahead and ask trustee Henry to please read the warrants.
Thank you, Madam President. Ratified warrants is listed in the bills payable, transmittal, and board memorandum number 20-24-25 in the total amount of $294,215,651.06.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to item 3.01. Is there anyone who did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? If not, do so now. Okay, I'll go ahead and close that. Trustee Cabasos, are you on the line?
Madam President, there are two people on the line that are not... Oh, they just got on mute. So they've just been muted.
Okay. Is one... I just want to make sure. Trustee Cabasos, are you online? Oh, okay. And then I just, I think we have, from what I understand, and we have on this item, on the Audit Advisory Committee, we're going to have three people that had applied. Are they in the audience? I'm not sure if I recognize them. I know Ms. Binder, can you just stand up so I can have a visual? There was also Jeff. Jeff, and you're here? Great. And then Christopher. Christopher, are you here? No? Okay. And then Mr. Johnson, are you online? No. Okay. So we, the candidates that are applying for our audit committee, they have, we've invited them to be present. It's not an interview, but they are asked to be present if they'd like to. And so we have two out of the four. Mr. Johnson was going to try to join us online, but he's not on yet. We don't interview the candidates. That's not the process. But if we did have a question on the application, we might ask it. So we're going to go ahead and move forward since we don't have any other public speaker cards for this item. I'm going to turn it over... Oh, I thought I was going to turn it over to Mr. Caruso, but he just walked out the door. Yes. We're going to go ahead and do a five-minute recess just to handle the technical issues. We're trying to get one of our trustees to participate in this process. So just a five-minute recess. I'm going to go ahead and start Item 3.01, our Audit Advisory Committee Appointment. We have the privilege as a team to be able to appoint members. These are volunteer opportunities for members in the public, and we have the privilege of having two open positions and four candidates. So we're going to be going through a process of appointing two, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Caruso regarding this agenda item.
All right, thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, Superintendent Ebert, Joe Caruso for the record. My apologies on the technology. We're trying to get everyone on. Just so you know, Trustee Bustamante Adams and members of the Board, Mr. Holland is also joining us on the call as well. So he's on the call with Mr. Johnson. As Trustee Bustamante Adams said, we're here this evening to appoint members to the Audit Advisory Committee pursuant to the committee's bylaws. So the first document on reference material this evening is actually the bylaws. And if I may, I just want to give a quick explanation of the role, which is on the top of the first page. The Clark County School District Board of Trustees formed the Audit Advisory Committee to advise the Board in the following areas. Strengthening accountability for the stewardship and efficient use of public funds. Providing a communication link between the external and internal auditors and the Board. Enhancing transparency of the district's financial operations. And improving public trust in the honesty and integrity of its public officials. So that, again, is on the very first part of Reference Item A for the bylaws. On the consent agenda, you just approved the renewal of two current members. The bylaws provide that those appointments are renewable, and both members graciously express that they are desired to continue to serve on the committee. So their term will now expire on June 30 of 2027. As Trustee Bustamante Adams said, on the regular agenda, we have the opportunity this evening to appoint two members to the committee, and you have a great selection pool of four applicants. The bylaws require that the five committee members serve staggered terms. Staggered terms must end on different years, and that's something that the committee bylaws noted initially when the committee itself was created, and somewhere in the course of time, we became off-cycle with that. So the intent tonight is to do like a course correction to get us back on the staggered terms. So the recommendation this evening is that the two new members that you appoint will be appointed to one-year terms starting July 1, and their term would expire on June 30 of 2026. Now, that has no effect on how long they can serve, because they, just as the other members, have the opportunity to say that they want to serve again. They would come back. We would do, just as we did on the consent this evening, and have them say that, yes, I want to serve for two years, and then we would put that on the consent item, and then, of course, they would be now staggered. So we, in essence, would have three members on one cycle and two on the other. I've worked...
Hi, gentlemen. If you could mute yourself, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Caruso.
Okay. I've worked very closely with Joshua Robinson, our chairperson, who's an absolute pleasure to work with. He's worked together with me on creating the agenda items, and he's reviewed and approved the plan that we bring forth to you this evening. In addition, I've worked with John Okusaki, who's also been wonderful to work with on this process, to make sure that we're consistent with the intent of the bylaws. In addition, we've redacted any personal information, address, phone number, email address from the applications that are posted in Board Docs. We've also brought all four applications to you this evening. It does state in the bylaws that staff would vet the applications. I know previous boards have said we want to see it all, kind of like we did with the superintendent search, so we brought all four applications to you this evening. At this time, I would welcome any questions about the process, et cetera.
Thank you. Any trustees here in the dais have any questions for Mr. Caruso? Trustee Asparza Strofigan?
I appreciate the overview, Mr. Caruso. We did receive a few questions about the role of the individuals on the committee. So for clarification, so that there's clarity, that it says on the bylaws, internal and external auditing. So it's not like, for example, a member on the committee could say, I want to request an audit independent from what is already existing. Is that correct?
How do I get back on the...
Madam President, members of the Board, Superintendent Ebert. So, Trustee Asparza Strofigan, to your question, it actually has on Page Three, it does talk about the limitations, and states that it is a recommending body to the Board Administration and to the auditors. It has no authority, no policymaking authority, and no administrative authority. So it does report back to the Board.
I appreciate that because, again, we just want the individuals that have applied, which we're excited about, understanding that they're advisors to the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Vice President Zamora, Trustee Dominguez, and Trustee Cabasos, if you're on, do you have any questions about the process from Mr. Caruso?
This is Lydia Dominguez. I do not.
This is Trustee Cabasos. I do not.
Thank you. Vice President Zamora?
I do not.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Caruso. I'm also going to ask you to stay on just for a second. I'm going to explain the selection process. So this is the process that will happen, and we've discussed it with our legal counsel as well. In order to provide an equitable opportunity, the Board will vote on each candidate in random order until two have received the majority approval. We'll begin with the Board's discussion of the candidates, and then we did note who is here present and who is online. Trustees, please, this is not an interview. The candidates will only be asked to come up front if we have a question on their application. Other than that, they will not come forth. After the Board's discussion, we will receive public comment. After public comment, I will determine the order in which the Board will vote on the candidates by randomly pulling their names out of the box, and then we will follow our procedure so that we'll assign the first one that's drawn, the number one, the second one that's drawn, number two, and so forth. And then I will ask for a motion to appoint the first candidate on the list, and then repeat for the other candidates until we receive a majority vote. And we're just so grateful as a team that we have people to consider. I know that we, as a team, have to be worthy of having this kind of involvement in advisory roles, and we are grateful. So thank you for putting your application, and we're just grateful that we have people to pick from, great people. So with that, then I am going to open up the process. This is our Board discussion. So anybody on the dais, is there questions? Trustee Biassadi?
Thank you, Madam President. I did have a question for Mr. Johnson. Do you hear me?
And this would be a question for his, on his application. Okay. Mr. Johnson, are you online?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
Hi, Mr. Johnson. It says on your application that you submitted that you are credited with saving taxpayers more than $60 billion as one of America's leading government watchdogs. Can you elaborate on your work there?
Yes, Trustee, thanks for asking. So my career has been spent at good government organizations, budget policy organizations, exposing wasteful spending, exposing corruption, working with lawmakers to eliminate wasteful spending that I've found through open records requests, working with auditors. Obviously, in the position that this committee proceeds in, acts in, I wouldn't necessarily be the person digging through budgets. I would be working with the audit professionals that you select as the Board of Trustees and helping to make those findings more understandable to you, helping you understand how to incorporate those findings. So while I certainly have a background that's probably richer than anybody in Nevada in seeing waste, exposing waste, helping taxpayers save money, you know, I can use that background to be helpful, but I don't see my role as being necessarily the watchdog, but more explaining what the watchdogs find in terms that is helpful to the Board and to the public.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Stevens?
Thank you. I actually have a question for three people on here. Is that okay? Can I do that?
Yep, keep going.
Okay, awesome. I'd like to start... Is Jeffrey on? Is he here?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Sher, if you'd just come to the middle. There you go, and you press... There you go.
Thank you.
Is it Jeffrey or Jeff?
I'm there.
Okay. So I'm looking at your resume, and I'm just wondering, when you talk about all the different positions that you held in, for the county...
Yes.
...as their director and so on, what were some of the main things that you did that you feel would be, that really fit here?
Well, I worked for Clark County Department of Finance. I worked in the audit department for a year, then was in the finance department for the remainder of my 25-year career with Clark County. And I did all of the steps throughout the organization, from financial analyst one to two, to a senior, to a principal, to the budget manager, to up to director. So I've seen it all throughout, working with all the departments and working with both our comptroller to run our audit. She was obviously the primary focus of it, but our department was the one that supported all of the financial transactions that did that. So my role was to oversee the operation in addition to understand all the needs of all the departments, and that was really where I focused. My, as I moved up in the department, was to ensure that the people in the department, as well as myself, was working hand-in-hand with the departments, to understand what their needs were, to understand how they could provide the services that they needed to, to the community. And that was really what our role was, was to oversee the financial operations for them.
Thank you. I have two other questions for two other people, but while Jeffrey is up here, I wouldn't mind taking a break real quick so other people can...
Trustee Asparza Strofigan?
Hi, Mr. Sher. First, I'm going to thank you for applying. There was a time where maybe we were really trying to recruit people, but now it's, we have options, so thank you for even putting your name out there. What I'm curious is your experience, you're an adjunct professor as well.
I was. That was many years ago. I did it early on in my career, in the early 2000s, but once 2008 came around, the community college started to cut back. I was an adjunct professor. Actually, when I moved out here, that was the reason I moved to Las Vegas, was because I got an opportunity at UNLV to teach. And so what I did was, I was doing part-time instruction at, when it was Clark County Community College at that point. And, but when 2008 came along, they had to make some cuts at the university, and they had the full-time professors teaching more of the classes, and so a lot of us adjunct just didn't have the opportunity. I taught in the math department. I've always enjoyed math, but I, my master's degree is in business administration, so I could not teach classes in the math department that transferred to the university level because that's not where my master's was. So I taught some of the lower-level math classes at the university, algebra, geometry, and those kind of things, which were those feeder classes into the, I believe it was Math 125 and above, those classes that I did. So I enjoyed it. I enjoy teaching. I enjoy doing public speaking. I did that at the county very much, doing presentations all over the county, from Laughlin to Mesquite and here in town, all over the place, so, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. It doesn't matter, I think, if a person has some past background experience. It seems to me that you're saying that you're a teacher at heart.
Yes.
So that is a unique thing for your resume, and I just was curious about that. Appreciate it.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you.
President?
Yes, Vice President Zamora?
Can I get a little bit of clarification? I know we said that this was a discussion section, and it very much feels that it's sounding like interviews.
No, it's just a question about the application and clarity.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Stevens, did you, no, Trustee Baron, did you have any questions for Mr. Sher about his application?
I turned myself, yeah. Thank you very much for coming down. In reading your resume, it's obvious that you are very familiar here with the, with the system of finance and government. How similar do you think your experience in county is compared to this? And you could actually also refer to size of the budget, if you like.
Absolutely. The last budget that I did was two years ago. I retired about 18 months ago. The budget was $12.2 billion for Clark County, and so I feel as though in my role as finance, budget and finance director there at the county, I worked with an elected board. I worked with them all the time, made sure that both they were informed, and as I mentioned to the trustee, always did public speaking as well to ensure that the public was involved as well and that they were. Transparency was very important to me, as well as my office, to make sure that both all the commissioners were aware of the financial situations that were going on within the community, whether good, bad, or indifferent. It was my job to tell them and ensure that they were aware of possibilities of things that were coming about. But I also had tried to keep the rest of the community involved as well. So as I look at this role, and now my retirement and moving on, is trying to see where I can maybe take some of that transition. I've worked with many auditors on many different audits over the years, and so I understand what they're looking for, and I understand from the other side. So, I hope that I can just provide that bridge, give maybe some local government finance experience to the group of people that you already have on there to try to be able to help them out a bit. I do need to note that I am a member of the Committee on Local Government Finance, which is a statewide financial oversight committee. I met a few of you when you were at the presentation about a year ago. And so, I just want that on the record, that if and when the school district ever has to come before CLGF again, I would, of course, look to the Attorney General, I guess, would that would be, to see if I received a position on this role of what my role would be with them. So, I just want to make that out there. I did put in my application. I want to make sure that I am clear and open.
Thank you so much. Vice President Zamora, do you have a question on the application?
I do not.
Trustee Dominguez, do you have any questions for Mr. Sher on the application?
I do, but I would like to ask the same question of all the candidates, if possible.
That's okay. Go ahead.
How would you ensure transparency and accountability to the public when reviewing the district's financial audits? And in 60 seconds or less?
Sure. I don't believe that, in this position, that it would be my role to inform the public. My role, as I understand through reading the bylaws, would be as an advisory to the Board of Trustees. And so, that would be my responsibility is to the trustees and the trustees alone. It is for the trustees, then, to decide on how they want the public to be made aware of that.
Trustee Dominguez, I'll ask you to redesign your question to just be specific about the application. So, but thank you, Mr. Sher, so far. Trustee Cavassos, do you have a question about the application for Mr. Sher?
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sher, thank you for being there tonight. Sorry, could not be there to meet you. I believe you touched on this on both your application and also with, I think, trustee Stevens. But what do you feel was the most valuable aspect of your county experience that will transfer to being on the CCSD Audit Committee?
I, there were so many things that I did at the county that I was very proud of, but one of the main things that I learned as being the finance director was the needs of the community, the needs of the people, that there is such a diverse population out there, and the different needs to the different groups of the people that are out there. And I think that what it did was, it opened up my eyes because I don't believe that through the career path that I thought that I would take, probably within the gaming industry that I was probably going toward, was that I would see the needs of the community. And working with social service and family services and juvenile justice and those kind of departments, seeing the needs of both families, children throughout the community, and the needs that they have. And that is really what's important to me, is that it opened up my eyes, that it really starts at a very young age, that if we can catch these people when they're young, that we can really help them moving on into the future. And that was where a lot of working with JJS and DFS and social service and seeing the impact that we can get. And so, obviously, at the school district, you are right at that place to be able to provide that to the people of the community, and it's where the kids are. And that's really where the important thing is. I volunteered a lot of time at family services, juvenile justice. I was the Easter Bunny at Child Haven for many years, just to be able to provide them. So, it's very important for me that we start with the young and that we give them a chance to survive and do well in this community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sher. And President Bustamante Adams, just so that I do stick to the protocol, do you wish me to hold off on other questions for other candidates?
Yes, I will circle back. Is there any other questions for Mr. Sher about his application? Trustee Stevens, you do have? Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sher. Trustee Stevens, do you have questions for other candidates?
I do. I have two questions for Ms. Binder.
If you could come forth, Ms. Binder.
So, do you know which binder it's in? This one? Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello.
So, on one of the questions, it says, why do you want to serve on the committee? And you said that you wanted to continue the work that you set out to accomplish. I was wondering, when you say "the work," what does that mean exactly for you? Can you clarify?
Sure. Thank you for the question, trustee Stevens. So, for the trustees that have been around, the years that I've been around, I made a pledge to our community that I would be here until my youngest child graduates high school. And he's entering fourth grade this year. So, I have nine years left that I have committed to serving this community. And when I initially was appointed to the Audit Advisory Committee, at that time with the board, they knew I was looking for more transparency. As many people can remember, four or five years ago, we had a tumultuous relationship with our then superintendent. There was a lot of infighting in our board, and it left a lot to be desired to the community. And so, when I initially applied to it, was because I was tracking so much of the money because there was really nowhere to see it. So, if people have financial questions in town, they call me because I have a handy-dandy spreadsheet. But I also, over those years, learned how to operate Open Book, which is a very valuable resource. And so, when I initially committed to that work, I saw the Audit Committee as a vessel to bring that more financial transparency to the community. And I set out to do that work. Mr. Robinson and I had several discussions about bringing potential changes to the bylaws to enable some of that work. However, the previous board would not, I guess, entertain a conversation about it. And so, at that point in time, about a year and a half ago, when we updated the bylaws, that's why the only thing that we altered was our meeting schedule and nothing else substantive in the bylaws.
Thank you. Please proceed. Go ahead.
Okay. My second clarifying question was on, and you started to lean into a little bit, was you asked, or you said in your application that when you first served on the committee, you didn't have educational accounting experience, but now you do? And I was just wondering if you could clarify, like, to what extent, what did that look like, from before to now?
Yeah, sure. Thank you again for the question. So, and I do, in hindsight, realize, from my first application to this one, I actually omitted some information that was in my initial application that had my qualifications to actually sit on this committee. So, if I may, just recap that. So, I spent the better part of many years while I was in college working for the Las Vegas, or, sorry, I'm thinking of Hillary, sorry, working for the Las Vegas Sands Convention Center. So, thankfully, because of my education, I scored really well on a couple math tests at the end of high school, and Adelson was recruiting us out of the high schools to come and work for him. And so, I was one of those lucky individuals. And so, in my years working there, I got to oversee the accounts payable, accounts receivable, and then we were also responsible for auditing all of the conventions, which meant everything from vendors to the booths and whatnot. And every convention can be anywhere from $5 to $100 million, depending on the show. So, anyway, so then, I was in college. I did not major in finance. I majored in law. And so, when I got my first degree, I left the Sands and went to work in my first law firm. And through law, you still have to do finance, unfortunately. So, that's why most lawyers are really good at geometry.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, I didn't, I'm so sorry, Madam President. I didn't answer, actually, answer her question. So, the difference now is, when I initially came on board, I did not have any educational accounting experience. However, this body provided me the educational accounting experience that I have learned and self-taught over the course of the last four or five years. So, thus, why I put in the three years on my application.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Stevens, to sticking to questions about the application. Trustee Ramona Asparza Strofigan, do you have a question for Ms. Binder?
I do. It's actually, trustee Stevens, it's like we are on the same wavelength, but I'm going to do a little bit of a slight, in the application, it talks about serving for three years. So, it says that you served on two committees. So, I'm curious, like, what was the time length and what was the, was there some kind of correlation between the two? Or can you clarify the three years? I don't know how much time on each. Were they concurrent?
Okay. So, I was appointed by my previous trustee Guzman to serve on the Audit, or the Attendance Zone Advisory Committee. And around that same time that year, I was asked to apply to the Audit Committee as well. And so, it was concurrent.
Thank you. Trustee Barron, do you have a question for, on the application for Ms. Binder?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Binder, just looking here over your resume, and I think I knew about it before, you have very extensive community volunteerism, both with our, with here with the district and with other NGOs and other organizations throughout the valley. I just, what's, to read between lines, how would you characterize your previous experience on this board that you're being considered for? How would you characterize it?
I'm sure I understand the question. I'm sorry.
In other words, you know, tell us a little bit about your experience, having been on that board. Was there anything that you considered to be something that you found really enlightening or something that you thought you really added to that board?
To the audit or the other boards I served on?
No, actually, to this board that, you know, we're considering you for. You were on it before, right? So, what is that that you really brought to it?
Well, I do know, at the time that I started serving, we were not getting presentations on Ethics Point. It took about eight months over the course of three meetings consistently pushing back against the former CFO, why we weren't receiving those presentations. I guess I'm assuming you guys know what Ethics Point is, but it's a, district employees, it's like a little app on their computer where they can report all types of things, whether it's like employee misconduct, financial things. There's, I think, a slew of about 10 or 11 different topics that employees can utilize that software for, to make reports directly to the district and administration. So, I did fight really hard to get that, and then we finally got it. At my last meeting, it was very smooth. We finally got to a very cohesive point of receiving those. Obviously, in those years, I did have to learn a lot, and I think that everybody was patient with me. I know that Ms. Scott, our internal auditor, spent significant time with me after I self-educated, before I even sat for my first meeting. And I will be very honest and say that that committee is a very quiet committee, and I think everyone pretty much knows. I'm not a very quiet person, but I try to be, like, as best as I can. So, I believe I really did bring a parental voice, a community concern, you know, a community view from it, that if I looked at something and thought that it was off or needed questioning, I always did that. My questions were almost always answered. And I like to think, because I didn't major in finance, and I was a band geek, but I still have personality. So, I do like to, I do like to think, as you guys mostly know, I am full of personality. And so, I also brought, obviously, that to there. But it really is learning. You know, you have to learn about the governmental accounting standards. You have to learn about the timing on those, what those mean to the district. And then, as well, you, so we have our annual independent audit, and that was learning a lot of fun. Historically, most trustees have admitted on the dais that they don't even read it. And so, they do really lean on our committee to go through that and work with, you know, our committee, our chair, internal, external, you know, to review that before it's brought to you for presentation and acceptance.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi, a question on the application for Ms. Binder.
Thank you, Madam President. To be clear, you mentioned your work in a law firm, but you're not a lawyer, right?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And I can see, you mentioned in the next nine years, you would like to be involved and engaged, and I think you will want to seize every opportunity where you can become involved. But I think we have to be very careful with the candidate and make sure that they're experienced in this particular area. You stated in your application also that you resigned from the AZAC Committee due to an impasse with a previous trustee. Can you clarify what circumstance it was that had you, made you resign to the committee, and under what circumstance you would resign to this one if appointed?
I don't see a problem with my question.
So, is there, make sure I understand the question, trustee Biassadi. So, is your question about the application, why she transferred from the zoning committee? Is that what the question is?
So, I made two previous questions, questions based on her testimony right now. And the last question was in reference to something on her application, which stated that you resigned from the AZAC Committee due to an impasse. I want to know what would make you resign from this committee if appointed? And I'd like to know what that impasse was.
Okay, we can, that's a question on your application. So, what was the impasse, Ms. Binder?
Sure. And thank you for the question. So, as many people know, I ran for trustee District Eight. And in my service to this community and the previous board, I was, my previous trustee, again, was Lisa Guzman. And after years of very dedicated service and doing almost everything that she ever needed or asked of me for my community, throughout the campaign, it was learned that she was supporting me, but actually working for one of my opponents. And so, when all of that proof kind of came together, one, most people know that I am very much about character, morals, and values. And so, when you come across somebody who is willing to stab you in the back, you cut your ties and you separate from that person. And so, that is exactly what I did. However, in doing that, with trustee Stevens, who has all of the knowledge of what happened, her and I have forged, I think, an almost impenetrable community relationship. We're both here to work for our community, for District Eight. I don't think anyone in this community can doubt that. And Emily and I, oh, sorry, trustee Stevens and I, made an agreement that she wouldn't do that to me, I won't do that to her. She understood what happened, and we've moved forward.
Thank you for that. Vice President Zamora, do you have a question on the application for Ms. Binder?
I do not.
Trustee Dominguez, any question?
Yes, Madam President, and thank you for the question, trustee Biassadi. I had that same in mind. I do want to disclose, I did work with Ms. Binder during the AZAC Committee, so I do appreciate the questions and what made you, brought you. So, I would like to hear, you know, you discussed a little bit about your relationship with trustee Stevens on why you came back, but you could have gone back to any committee. So, why did you want to come back to the Audit Committee?
Thank you for the question. Actually, so, last year, when I sent the resignation email to my chair, it was actually quickly resended, but Mr. Robinson forgot to tell then-President Garcia Morales. And so, it was not caught until she had already sent an email out to all of the trustees, notifying them of a vacancy. And then-President Garcia Morales did call me to apologize for that, but since that process had started, they were going to stay with that.
Thank you so much. Trustee Cavassos, any questions on the application for Ms. Binder?
Yes, we do. And I also want to go on the record here that I feel that we need to be very cautious here, that we're going into some territory, that these are supposed to be questions directly related to the interview, without going into anything that appears to be a personal attack. So, having said that, Ms. Binder, thank you so much for being here today. I know that you are here quite often in different capacities. So, I would like to ask you, you do talk about community a lot and why you want to come back. much for being here today. Um, I know that you are here quite often in different capacities. So I would like to ask you, uh, you do talk about community a lot and why you want to come back. As far as being on the audit committee, you stated that a lot of times, some of the trustees, you know, time constrictions, um, trying to stay up to date with what's going on, on a huge budget, and that we depend on the audit committee. What do you feel that your extensive experience on the audit committee would most bring to this position that no other candidate could bring at this particular time?
Wow, thank you, trustee Cavazos. That's a little question. Um, so I believe that in my years of service to this community, that I have forged amazing interpersonal and professional relationships with our board. Um, I like to believe that there's a level of trust when I'm asked my opinion, that they know I'm going to tell them the truth. I've never beat around the bush. I've never hid anything and I have never, um, when I, when any of you have asked me for advice, I have never strayed you in any type of way that was not for the betterment of our community. And as I sit here today and everything that I serve in this great state, I continue to do that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you for your answer.
Okay, seeing, I don't see any other questions for Ms. Binder. Thank you so much. Trustee Stevens, I'm going to stay on that roll. I know you said you had a question for another candidate. Mr. Holland, are you on the line?
Then I do not.
Okay. Uh, is there any questions, additional questions for Mr. Johnson? Trustee, Vice President Zamora, did you have any questions on the application for Mr. Johnson?
President, I just want to take a moment real quick because there is another person on this call that I'm, I'm not sure who they are. And I'm not sure if they're having difficulties unmuting.
Can you, um, share the number that you see?
It starts with 909. That's the area code.
909, okay. I'm looking at Mr. Caruso to see if, um, that is either, he is calling the individual.
And I just wanted to take the moment because I know folks were having issues muting and unmuting earlier.
Thank you so much. Cause that is something that we cannot see.
Madam President, if I could, uh, continue with a question I had for Mr. Johnson?
Yes, is Mr. Johnson still on the line?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Um, please proceed, trustee Dominguez.
Thank you. Um, in reviewing your, uh, application, you noted that you, um, led several audits for financial investigations for several state agencies. Could you elaborate on that a little more on that background?
Absolutely, trustee. Uh, so I have served on, um, a couple of state commissions and, uh, actually federal agencies as well. Um, the state, uh, the Nevada Board of Optometry, the Tennessee Commission on Children and Youth, which largely oversaw, um, foster care placement and, um, and adoption services in Tennessee. Uh, the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, I was on a, um, an audit task force for them. They're part of the, uh, Department of Justice. And so I have myself oversaw, uh, audits, uh, at the state level and, and the federal level. Um, and also I've, I've done a lot of work in my career, taking audit findings, CAFR findings, annual report findings, investigative findings, uh, from audits, from auditors and audit committees, and taking that esoteric language and turning it into something that policymakers can sort of understand and use in their policymaking work. And I think that, that's a big part of what this, what this committee does because obviously we aren't necessarily the ones hiring the auditors or doing the audits. But what we are doing is taking that information and making it so that you as a trustee, um, trustee Dominguez can, can understand and utilize in your policymaking decisions so that the, you can share that with the public, with your constituents, uh, with parents in the district. So, uh, I think that background, uh, where I understand the process and then can use, uh, my sort of career as a, as a watchdog, as a journalist, as an investigative reporter, as a columnist, to make that language understandable is the value that I can bring to this committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I appreciate your volunteer work with the, with Nevada Reading Week. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, Vice President Zamora, do you have a question for Mr. Johnson?
I do not.
Trustee, um, Cavazos, do you have a question for Mr. Johnson?
Uh, yes, I do, President. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Johnson, uh, for being online and, um, being available and applying. Uh, sir, I wanted to, uh, basically touch on, um, your very extensive, uh, resume and your experience where you use the term, um, government watchdog, uh, numerous times. What do you, and I know you touched on this briefly, but I was having trouble getting on the call, sir, so I apologize. What do you see is the biggest difference, uh, on your resume where you cite government watchdog as compared to the role that you would play on the audit committee?
Sure. So what I do as a government watchdog, as an investigative reporter, uh, working with think tanks and, and media outlets, is taking things from audits, taking things from budgets, taking things from open records and exposing those things to the public. Uh, so, you know, wasteful spending, corruption, um, you know, people enriching themselves with public funds. Uh, and I should point out, uh, I've, I've managed to force several, um, public officials from both parties out of office. Uh, certainly wasteful spending and corruption doesn't, doesn't see a party or an ideology. Um, but, um, the, the big difference here is that's, that's not the role. The role here is to understand what the auditors are finding, uh, what the reports that, uh, they come back with show, and then helping you as a trustee to understand, um, what those findings are, perhaps how you can incorporate that into your policymaking. Uh, but you are the one, uh, who ultimately decides how to use that information. You're the one who can decide whether to amplify those findings or not. So, uh, while I'm, I'm proud of my background and proud of saving taxpayers money and, you know, exposing corruption and, and bad actors, that's not the role here. The role here is to help you, uh, with, with your two main constituencies, which are, uh, you know, the students and the people who make sure those kids have a great education, and also the taxpayers who fund those services. Uh, make sure that you have the tools that you need to make sure that those two constituencies are, are taken care of, are respected, uh, taxpayers' money is well used so that kids can get a great education here in Clark County.
Uh, thank you, sir, very much for your answer. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for, um, Mr. Johnson? Seeing none, then, uh, Mr. Caruso, we do have Mr. Holland on line. Uh, trustee Stevens.
Thank you. Uh, Christopher, can you hear me?
Hi, yeah, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, thank you for joining us.
Sorry about the technical difficulty.
That is okay. Um, so I was, when I look at your application, I, I see some extensive, um, background in your oversight and auditing of a very different kind of budget. It looks like you're, you're, it's, it's not necessarily educational, which we see in here. Can you kind of elaborate on how you, I'm trying to think of the right word, how you utilize that experience and transfer it into, um, this, the, the auditing that you would be doing here with public education versus, um, gaming?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So typically when it comes to, you know, accounting, it, it can vary from industry to industry, but does typically tend to stay the same, right? It's supposed to be the universal language of, of all businesses, including government and, um, and education. So really, it's, it's oversight of the budget and being able to dig into the numbers and, and really understand, you know, the difference between an accrual, cash basis accounting, which is all still very relevant, and being able to kind of be that, you know, liaison to explain those differences to, you know, instead of to the business this time, it is to, to the board of trustees, which is yourselves, right? So, um, even though it seems very different, you know, the, the base language is, is the same, which is accounting and finance, right?
Thank you. Trustee Satori?
Um, yes, thank you. In addition to your, um, job experience, related experience, you had mentioned that you had volunteer experience with CCSD, particularly with junior achievement and budget and finance training. Can you elaborate a little bit more on your volunteering there and for the time span, like how long you were involved in those initiatives?
Absolutely. So, um, through Venetian and, and Sans Care, their organization, um, I was, uh, asked to volunteer at, at a few high schools and I just put together a quick, uh, budget presentation going to these high school students, um, ultimately showing them, you know, a little bit more of, of the basic financial education that we would think that we would get from our parents, but not everyone, you know, it's assumed that you would get that from your parents, but not everyone has, has that background. So teaching them about credit, credit scores, how to open a bank account, um, you know, different, uh, budgeting for a personal budget, and kind of giving them the tools that, you know, as they step out in the world, some of that assumed knowledge, we took the assuming out and, and hopefully gave them tools that they would continue to use. Um, and then also a few career days where I got to talk to a few elementary schools about finance and careers and finance and accounting. And then lastly with junior achievement. Um, so those were two very short-term volunteering opportunities. Junior achievement, it was the classroom days where we would go into class. We had an almost an eight-hour lesson plan. Um, and I did third grade, uh, twice. And it was, uh, an opportunity to teach them also about cost versus revenue versus profit, um, and kind of, you know, introduce them, you know, when their brains are starting to develop a little bit earlier into some of those financial terms so that they could grow from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Zamora, do you have a question?
I do not.
Trustee Dominguez, do you have a question for Mr. Holland?
I do not.
Trustee Cavazos, uh, do you have a question?
I do not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That ends, um, our discussion. Thank you. We're going to go to public comment and we do have one person, Ms. Binder.
That's okay. You guys didn't know. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. Um, I'm actually just going to point out that there are two very highly participating community members that came in after you closed comment cards and maybe just throw it out there to see if they were interested in public comment.
Thank you. That public comment was closed earlier. And so now we are going to actually go through our process, um, to go ahead and, uh, make a selection. And so we do have, um, yes, if you could throw them in that. We're going to throw our names, the names of the four candidates into our bucket here. And, uh, this will determine the order of how we're going to take the votes. And so our first person assigned to number one is Ms. Binder. She will be number one. Second person will be Mr. Share will be number two. And then the third person that we will vote, uh, Mr. Johnson. And then that makes Mr. Holland, um, number four. So now I'm going to ask for a motion, um, for those that want to support, um, candidate number one that was selected, uh, to be pulled from the hat, Ms. Binder. Um, trustee Barron.
Yes. Given her extensive volunteerism and integration and advocacy for, uh, the community and, uh, the school district.
Trustee, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to appoint Ms. Anna Marie Binder? Yes. And so let me just, let me back up for my, um, for me, for my edification. Um, we, I will make the motion and then I'm just going to ask members to cast their vote. So unless you have, yes, I'm making the motion.
I just wanted to go ahead and, uh, I was quivering here with the anticipation of trying to, uh, submit to a motion. But I'll shut up at this point because you already know how I feel.
Yes, thank you. So those who would like to support, um, uh, Ms. Binder to be one of the applicants, I'm going to ask you to cast your votes. Uh, Mr. Okasaki, I see you.
Yeah, I just want to make, clarify, um, it is an action item. I would, I would recommend that you just go through the procedures. So go ahead and have a motion in a second before you vote is what I would recommend.
So I have a first from trustee Barron and I have a second from, um, Esparza Strofigan. Okay, um, all those in favor, if you could cast your votes. Trustee Zamora.
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez.
Aye.
Trustee Cavazos.
Yes.
Now help me with the math here. So, um, so then that's, passes six to one. Next, do I have a motion, uh, for Mr. Share?
I would like to make-
We're waiting for the board to clear, but, uh, trustee Esparza Strofigan.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Share on the-
I have a first. Do I have a second? Trustee Barron.
I'll do second.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Trustee, uh, Vice President Zamora.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Dominguez.
Nay.
Trustee, um, Cavazos.
Yes.
So that motion passes five to two. We're going to have to do math today. So five to two. Okay, so we have, um, our two candidates. Thank you so much. Um, we have reached, uh, the majority votes with Ms. Binder and Mr. Share. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Holland for your applications. I hope that there's many other opportunities to serve, um, within, uh, CCSD, CCSD as well for the trustees. Uh, thank you for your application. Thank you to, um, our chair, Mr. Josh Robinson, for his volunteerism to chair the committee. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to, um, our second item, which is item 3.02, an employment agreement. Uh, chief financial officer, I'll turn that over to our superintendent, Ms. Ebert.
Thank you, Madam President. For consideration for the board tonight, I'm really excited to bring you, uh, not nominee, so we just did all those nominees, excuse me, a selection for Justin Dehoff to serve as our chief financial officer. He went through a rigorous process, um, first by a committee which was comprised of both, uh, internal staff as well as external staff and a CFO within a school district within our state. Uh, and then, uh, also had the opportunity to not only be in that interview, but to other interviews as well. We conducted a background check and have had fingerprinting. Uh, so he is qualified, but in that respect, but not only that, the interview process, um, being a strong one, he brings, uh, core values, which we as the Clark County School District follow, and I've heard many of you say as well, is that we need to make sure that every single dollar that we have within the Clark County School District is allocated to the classrooms to make sure that our students can achieve. And so with that, for your consideration, um, I am presenting Justin Ella Dehoff to you for, um, as the chief financial officer.
Thank you, Superintendent Ebert. Uh, Vice President Zamora, I'm going to start with you to see if you have any questions.
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Trustee Dominguez, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a question, um, for our superintendent. If she could, um, briefly go through the process of how, um, she, uh, selected, um, Mr. Dehoff.
Thank you, trustee Zamora. So the, um, first process was the application process vetted through our HR team. Um, from there, we had a committee, uh, as I just noted, with, uh, experts, uh, CFOs, um, both within our, uh, community as well as within the- community as well as within the state, inclusive of one of our deputies as well. That was the first round. From that round of interviews, we narrowed it down to three candidates who all came in to the district offices. For that round, we had myself as well as internal staff, again, went through those questions on qualifications, currently serving in a private company as service there, but prior to that, which relates specifically to this job, is service in Maryland where their billed budget is $9 billion annually, so twice what our current budget is, and led there as well as working in a large school district such as ours. So phone calls were also made to former supervisors as well as myself following up on other questions, and our monitor also was included in this process since we know that we want to lift up the entire team currently that is in business in finance. And then from there, once the decision was made, I asked for a background check, credit score, all those other pieces, which was conducted and came out clean.
Thank you. Do you have another question, trustee Dominguez?
No, Madam President. Thank you, Superintendent Ebert, for that description.
Thank you. Trustee Cabazos?
I do not have any questions. I just wanted to commend Superintendent Ebert for bringing us such a quality candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Satori?
Yes, thank you as well. On the contract, it says that the agreement will commence as soon as possible after board approval. What is his availability on when he can start, and when do we anticipate this going into effect?
Thank you. So he is moving from across the country, has relocating his entire family. He actually came out prior to being offered the position to look at our community because this is a marriage, these types of jobs, and so has been looking for a residence and is ready once the board makes a determination that we would like to hire Justin.
Thank you. Trustee Asparza Straffigan?
I apologize for my delay. I wanted to kind of ask specifically because it was brought up from our past CFO when he was terminated and received compensation. So is there a change in the contract for the potential, because this is an at-will contract, for compensation?
Superintendent Ebert, for the record, thank you, trustee Aspart Straffigan, on page.
I believe it's on page possibly four, and I only mention that as you're looking for that because the previous was a six-month compensation, and we were criticized, but that was a contract that was decided upon, and I think this is essential. We want to establish our financial fiduciary responsibility and obligation, as you mentioned, that we are trying to learn lessons and not repeat those same mistakes.
Okay. For termination of an at-will employee, there are four different areas. Your question is specifically related to, I believe, for without cause. So the Clark County School District making a determination that without cause, we would like to sever our relationship with the employee, and if that transpires, it's letter B. This contract is less, for one year, specifically for Justin, if that was within this one year, he would be less than five years of employment, so it would be three-month period of compensation.
I really applaud your writing, the contracts, and I will say as an expectation that that trend should continue. So thank you for that, Superintendent.
Thank you. Trustee Barron?
Yes, thank you very much. Actually, the trustee kind of like, I wasn't asking about that, but I got beat to it. I will ask this, Madam SI, so it looks like you cast a really wide net when you went out for our CFO. The one thing that I've learned over the city of North Vegas, and I hope this gentleman is listening, that you can find more bang for your buck since you're a financial guy in the city of North Las Vegas where you have easy and ready access to your leaders over there, plug for my city. But you cast a very wide net on this one, and just reading, he's a band geek. Yes, he was a band guy, a music teacher. These are things that just sing out to my heart. Are there any other positions that are of critical hire as this? Then again, I can think of another band geek that you hired very close to you as well, but I won't mention her because I keep on getting in trouble every time I do. Anyhow, are you going to apply this wide net approach for other critical hires as we go forward? And this critical hire seems like it was very, very effective. He seemed like the type of person who could step into a number of roles with us here at CCSD.
Thank you, trustee Barron, for that question. Specifically for this job, very, I would say for all the jobs, including the deputies. The two deputies are here locally. And as you all know, not only have I worked here locally, but in New York, and then national connections as well. And so this was a very wide net, yes. We also have, which just breaks my heart, and I see she's already looking at the ceiling because she knows I'm talking about her, but we have someone who has a well-deserved retirement, and we have posted the position for our Student Support Services Division. So that nationally as well, we're looking for someone that really wants to work with our students with disabilities, our nurses, our crisis team, all of that work that Monica, Dr. Monica Cortez has led for many years and through the pandemic. So, and she's getting flushed right now, yes. She does rock. We also had resignation for our RC department, so data, our student data, our schools as well, so those components, so we have that position flying nationally as well. Those are the two that I mentioned this evening.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from the dais? All right, this is an action item. I did not ask if there was public speaker comment cards that have not been submitted for this item. There's nothing on my list. Okay, then I will entertain a motion, trustee Barron.
I'll approve.
I have a first from trustee Barron, trustee Henry.
I'll second.
Okay, first and a second, please cast your votes. Trustee, Vice President Zamora?
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez?
Aye.
Trustee Cabazos?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. The next item is 3.02. I do not see any public comment cards. If you haven't submitted one, please do so now. Okay, seeing none, that item is closed. The employment agreement for, oh, it's worth 3.03, the Chief Community Engagement Officer, Superintendent Ebert.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'm excited this evening to present to you Kirsten Seer as the Chief Community Engagement Officer. Kirsten actually has experience within the Clark County School District, successful experience. I had the pleasure of working with her directly many years ago. Most recently, for the last six years, she has served as the Public Education Foundation President. So many of you have worked with her, and many of our community members have worked with her for many years, collaboration. Most recently, I personally have worked with her on the book bus. We know that on that project, initially, there was 50,000 books that we were looking to distribute in partnership with the Clark County School District. At that time, when I served in another role, over 122,000 books. So she has both partnership experience, communication experience, experience within the Clark County School District, and as I promised all of you, we would hit the ground running. So she is an excellent recommendation for joining the leadership team within the Clark County School District, and I stand ready for any questions you may have there.
Thank you. Any of the trustees here in the dais, trustee Asparza Straffigan?
Thank you, Superintendent, for that clarification and giving us kind of the historical context. I've been receiving inquiries regarding the title of the position, so I think you knew that this was going to come up, knowing that we have already a different individual serving almost with a similar title. So could you clarify the roles and the title, what does that signify, what those job responsibilities and duties will entail?
Thank you, trustee Asparza Straffigan. So the first part in her title is the word chief. We have the level of chiefs within the school district. We have the deputies, we have the chiefs, we have associate superintendents, assistant superintendents. Within this portfolio is government relations as well as community engagement components. And so I made the determination to have it labeled community engagement because of the government relations component, and instead of making it a big, long title, having it be one. I do understand, I did not predict the amount of people that would ask, you know, well, whose job is this and who, so I will own that piece. But the very first thing, and Kirsten and I already have spoken about this, is that she will be going into that department and conducting a SWOT analysis, making sure that the alignment of job duties and tasks. So we may see job titles that are within that portfolio change, and most likely they will to make sure there is clarity, who's working with government relations, who's working community outreach, who's working in marketing, those pieces within that department. But at this level, it is a chief position, cabinet-level position, serving our entire community.
Thank you for that clarification. And as a follow-up, so would it be inclusive of communications?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the trustees on the dais? Vice President Zamora, any questions?
Not really a question. I think I have more of a comment, and it falls a lot with trustee Asparza Straffigan, just a lot of upcoming changes that are going to be coming into place. Are there any thoughts, Superintendent, of, I don't know, like charts, like a chart of departments and what that looks like for us internally, and maybe something more digestible externally, just to give information, give community some information to kind of make it all make sense?
Yes, trustee Zamora, thank you for that question because I was actually having conversation with staff this afternoon about our organizational chart and how people can find staff members within the Clark County School District. So that specific task was actually assigned earlier this afternoon to make sure that when we open up schools, that we can find our staff, we know their phone numbers, we know exactly who their reports are. That is something that, I'm not quite two months old yet, but that I've heard over and over again, that finding some of our staff, where they actually sit within the organizational chart, has been difficult.
Perfect, thank you. And this was not a planted question.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have some, I just want to acknowledge our superintendent. Thank you for going through this process and doing an interview, and also wanting to make sure we get information out to the community that we have. CCSD has so many resources that we need to reach out to parents, and so they know where to get help. So I'm really glad we're able to get someone new on the team.
Thank you. Trustee Cabazos?
Yes, President. I just wanted, if I wanted to ask an additional clarification, I believe that trustee Asparza Straffigan basically covered the clarification question. So Superintendent, I just wanted to ask the SWOT analysis, do we have any kind of a timeline on when we'd be looking at the results of that?
Thank you, trustee Cabazos. Those types of analyses usually take about six to eight weeks within a department, so I'd imagine that that will be completed no later than eight weeks after the start date.
Okay, thank you. And just to also clarify, because I apologize, terrible problems with technology. This is like the third time in seven years that I've ever had to call, so it's a new experience for me. And so I wanted to make sure that I heard correctly that as far as the chief position, the government relations and the communication would be combined.
Both of those departments are within that portfolio, yes, as well as Vegas PBS.
Okay, oh, as well as Vegas PBS?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no other questions and not having any public comment, I will entertain a motion on item 3.03. Trustee Henry.
So moved.
Okay, I have a first from trustee Henry, trustee Stevens.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, please cast your votes. Vice President Zamora?
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez?
Aye.
Trustee Cabazos?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Superintendent. We are now going to move on to item 3.04. Before I open that item, is there anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that. No one has signed up. Dr. Cortez, if you would please proceed.
Take three. Okay. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Superintendent Ebert. My name is Monica Cortez. I'm the Chief of Health and Student Services Division. I'm here tonight to bring forward notice of intent revisions for two regulations to be in alignment with current law and language that is used in our current time. I would like to thank the team for their proactive work and the collaboration in bringing these forward to you. I would like to first bring your attention to item 3.04, Regulation 5151, Physical Examination, Immunization, and Diagnostic Programs. This was adopted in 1963, revised in 1977, most recently last revised in 1981. Examples of the verbiage that has been updated are that parent is reflected as parent guardian, Nevada school law is referred to as pursuant to law, and Clark County Health District is referred to as the Southern Nevada Health District, referenced throughout the document. Those are very minor changes, but were necessary changes to reflect our current times. Madam President, I'll take questions.
Thank you. I'll start with our Vice President Zamora. Do you have any questions on item 3.04, the district regulations 5151?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to, if she could extend on how, like parental, I guess, how are parents notified of their rights on this?
Trustee Dominguez, thank you for your question. All regulations are posted on the website. Notice of intent was also posted for communication. It comes before the board tonight. It also is brought back for consent in two weeks. Additionally, our information is sent in the Back to School Reporter, which has a new name, I'm sorry, Todd, Back to School Guide. Everything that goes out, all of our communication is generally referenced in that document.
Any additional questions, trustee Dominguez?
I'm more, I guess I'm more focused on the part where, like exemptions, how are parents aware of the exemptions available?
That's it. Yes, go ahead, Dr. Cortez.
In regards to immunizations and the process for that, it is listed under parent resource.
In regards to immunizations and the process for that, it is listed under Parent Resource Guide on our website. If our families go to the CCSD website, you are able to then go to the SSD website that has our, all of our health information. We have all of our clinics that are available, as well as we have a link to the Nevada Department of Ed where all the exemptions are included in there, as well as the process that needs to follow through Nevada law. It is also referred to, again, in our Back to School Reporter.
Trustee Dominguez, any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Cortez.
Trustee Cavazos, any questions?
No, no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the trustees here in the dais? Seeing none, then I will go ahead and entertain a motion on item 3.04. Trustee Asparza Strofigan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to accept the revisions as presented for Regulation 5151 on item 3.04.
Thank you. I have a first, trustee Satori.
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. Vice President Zamora.
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez.
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez. Did I lose her? Is she still on? She's still on? Does she have her hand raised or anything? Trustee Zamora, can you see if her hand is raised, or she has a thumbs up, or?
Hi, President. I think she was trying to speak, and she probably lost connection, but she is unmuted.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote then. Go ahead and process it. So that passes six with one, I'm going to say abstention. Can I do that?
President, she did put in the chat, trustee Dominguez put in the chat, aye, so.
Okay, I'm going to take that then as the aye vote for trustee Dominguez, so that passes seven to zero. Thank you, Vice President. We're going to go ahead, Mrs., Dr. Cortez, you are also item 3.05. Is there anyone that has not completed a public speaker card for this? Okay, seeing none, that's closed. Go ahead, Dr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam President. In referring to item 3.05, Regulation 5156, Automated External Defibrillator, otherwise known as AEDs. This is in alignment with the legislature that was just passed, AB 454, the most recent legislative session, to include requirements of all high school students and the site to have a plan. If I can bring your attention to 2B, we reference this as a minimum requirement for the site. However, we have a robust plan and a protocol that we have implemented since the AED initiative in CCSD. I will read specifically, "All schools with high school students, as well as the district locations deemed by the superintendent, will be equipped with a minimum of one AED device that may require additional device due to the size of the facility." Next, if we can reference your attention to 4A3, this also documented of AED use, the device was deployed and used for a cardiac event. We specified that any documentation of AED device, if a device was deployed in a cardiac event, which is also in alignment with our plan. Lastly, Section 5 has the most significant changes, however, the changes are language clarifying that they must be employees for American Heart Association, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, CPR, AED, and up to date. B is in alignment as well with AB 454 that just passed. Site administrators must complete and submit an annual AED plan for the building, and this consists of AHA, trained personnel, emergency communication. With your permission, I'll turn it back over to the board for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the trustees here in the dais? Trustee Biasadi?
Thank you, Madam President. What was this decision based on? Are there statistics, or is there data showing a need for these devices in all schools? Is there an increase in cardiac arrest? Because I have seen the news, I have seen an increase in those types of reports after the COVID vaccine in our youth, so I'm wondering if this is linked to that.
Trustee Biasadi, thank you for the question. There absolutely has been an increase in the last few years of the need of more cardiac response. We have implemented AEDs for life-saving opportunities for students and staff in the district, so it's been a great saving for us, for our community.
Thank you so much. Trustee Asparza Strofigan.
Thank you, Dr. Cortez, for having this be kind of your parting piece of work, which is extensive. We are grateful. My question is, and you may not, you may not know this, but is, was there any funding, because the law was passed, and is there any funding that's coming with that new law from, is it unfunded? Do you know?
Trustee Asparza Strofigan, to my knowledge, there was no funding that was aligned with this.
So it's an unfunded mandate that we will definitely be expected to provide, necessary and life-saving, but it's something that we have to shore up in our budget to ensure that we are providing that for every site.
Correct. And with our Superintendent, we've made adjustments to ensure that we have the necessary staff to fulfill the requirements that go along with maintenance and the drills that are required in our plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Baron.
Yes, and being familiar with your resume, let me tell you, I think we're going to really miss you here in the district, but you have things to take care of yourself. Can you please, at Ransell High School, of course, if I remember, if I recall exactly, we didn't have one AED, we had multiple. Sometimes you can't tell by looking at someone whether they have a heart condition or not, and it don't necessarily have to be some old geezer like me, it could be a finely tuned athlete that you have no idea. If I remember correctly, there was a young woman, one of these top athletes at a school, collapsed because no one knew that she had a heart condition. Could you speak to how are the AED machines, I guess they're just AEDs, how they're distributed, based upon school size and so on and so forth, and who might actually have access to it? I know that's a lot, but I think that would really help the public to realize just how much, of course, the district has planned ahead of time for these really unfortunate events.
Trustee Baron, appreciate the information. I will do my best to answer, and please correct anything, Mr. Ogasaki. First, I'm not a medical professional, and I'm not giving out any medical advice, but I can address, we do have in our plan a specific footage. Based on the square footage is how we allocate our AED. So yes, our high schools, we have multiple devices in very common areas that are labeled throughout the school, and that is outlined in our plan. Part of this is also having a medical provider who not only reviews every AED incident, he also reviews our plan and communicates with us when we have questions to ensure that we're in compliance, because these are under a license and their prescription, so every AED. We do have, I believe it's 856 AEDs, don't quote me exactly, but it is that rough number, and so yes, we have multiple AED devices. Additionally, part of our plan is that we have four drills a year that happen, as well as we have professional learning that must occur with a team of 10. So every site that has an AED, that is a district site, we have a team of 10 that is not only CPR, AED certified, but they participate in a couple drills, not all four, but they're required to participate in a couple a year.
And thank you. Trustees Satori.
All right, thank you. And I will also echo that you'll be sorely missed, and we wish you a very happy retirement. My question is, and I apologize if it's in here and I just can't find it, but I was wondering what the life expectancy of the AED device is and what the responsibility is to replace it.
Great questions. Trustees Satori, I don't have the exact life, but I believe the batteries in the pads are a two-year cycle, so that is a cost that we do expense for the district. It is also, we have elementary or pediatric pads and adult pads to ensure that we meet the necessary jewels that are required, because there are different things that come up. And that is funds that we've been able to utilize, Essar funding, I believe, and then also some of our district general funds that we use to assist. This is a year that we've already budgeted and planned because of the timeframe continuing on. The most important part, I think, to be aware of is that all of our AEDs are the same. So that way, if I was to go to a different site, it would be clear awareness of the device and how it's used, and that it's not a challenge to the operator.
That's good, thank you.
Trustee Biasadi.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Cortez, I just wanted to express my gratitude. You're leaving a legacy of care for our kiddos, and thank you, I wish you a happy retirement.
Thank you. Vice President Zamora, any questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. Dr. Cortez, thank you so much for all the work. I think we have spent a lot of time together at graduations and seeing just the way you and those specific schools, those relationships you have. I know you will be really missed. I know I'm going to miss you, but just thank you for all the work, because it's really labor of love that you have been doing, especially with our special education students, so just thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. I lost connection there for a minute. Dr. Cortez, thank you so much, and I appreciate all the work you've done, and happy retire, soon retirement. For the AEDs, I was hoping we could just briefly discuss what we did in the trustee briefing as far as the training that entails this type of utilizing this device, and if I can make a comment there, I mean, this device is very life-saving and even utilized in situations where, such as Arbor View, where there was not, you know, the life wasn't going to be able to be saved, so, you know, we give these kids, or even adults, as much chance as we can get. Can you go over the training that is done for this device?
Trustee Dominguez, thank you for the opportunity. So all staff that are considered part of the AED team, there is at least 10 individual staff members at the site who are, not only the American Heart Association approved, but they do go through our district review. So as I spoke to trustee Baron earlier, there are quarterly updates that happen through our Canvas system or Elms, and they need to pass, we need to pass those, as well as participate in physical drills. And so if you're at a site, you will hear, this is a drill, this is a drill, AED at such and such location, and the team is required to report to at least two of those four to continue to be part of it. We have trainers for athletics that are also trained and very well aware of it. Many staff are also trained in general, they're not necessarily always part of the team, and then I believe the other piece, trustee Dominguez, that we covered is just that the liability is not on the staff member for responding and acting in the best effort that they can.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Cavazos.
President, trustee Cavazos had to hop off.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Then I am going to ask if there is a motion to approve item 3.05, trustee Asparza Strofigan.
I'd like to make a motion to point, or point, approve the Regulation 5156 as recommended, item 3.05.
Thank you, trustee Baron.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. Vice President Zamora.
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez.
Aye.
That motion passes six to zero. Thank you, Dr. Cortez. We're going to move on to our next business item, 3.06, Facility Master Plan. Before we begin the presentation, well, this is not an action item, so we are, there's no need for yellow public comment cards. Gentlemen, please proceed when you're ready.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, Brandon McLaughlin, Assistant Superintendent for our Construction Development Division. We are very pleased to be presenting the first of what we believe to be four presentations about our Facility Master Plan. This one is capturing the spring engagement related to some guiding principles and an assemblage of all the applicable data that'll be driving some of the options, draft options, underlying options that we'll be presenting into August. So this is really just a preface to say, how's our building conditions, how's our enrollment going to be trending, what are some other survey results that I know has been a hot topic of discussion, so we're very excited. And I'm joined by Mr. Paul Mills of Canada Design and Mr. Rick Baldwin with our comprehensive planning team. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mills.
Good evening, President Bustamante Adams, members of the board, and Dr. Ebert. It's a pleasure to be in front of you today to give you an update. Today's meeting and presentation really is, has three purposes. One, to give you an update on the progress of the work to date, as well as the strategic planning data that we've been looking at and the implications thereof from our analysis, as well as a look ahead into next steps into the process. In our diagram here, we show our foundational design of our process that's iterative in nature, but begins with establishing guiding principles and gathering data, and then going into an exploratory phase of creating options that can be vetted through the community, and finally, decisions in action on the part of the Board of School Trustees. As you can see, we are right at that pivot point between data and options, and we did spend four days working with the district planning group last week, developing and drafting options that will be presented to you later this summer, August 28th. So we've been working hard, engaging with your stakeholders in three different fronts. First, we have the district planning group, and as a reminder, as we presented to you in March, the design of this process, this is composed of educational and operational leaders from across the district. And we also have assembled five stakeholder advisory groups that are geographical in nature, and these are intended to be diverse cross-representational stakeholder groups that includes first and foremost students, as well as families, teachers, site administrators, and community members. We also hosted over 18, actually, community forums during the spring timeframe, and these were virtual in-person, conducted in English with Spanish translation services available, as well as monolingual Spanish available for those who prefer that. And we heard a lot from your stakeholders, a lot of passion for schools as center of the community, but there are four areas that we feel really stood out as major themes that we took to heart to really inform the guiding principles of this work. First and foremost, that students and learning come first. That is the core mission of the district, and there's indeed a passion for the youth in your community and what they mean for the future. Also, your stakeholders really care about equity. They want to make sure that every student has opportunity to fulfill their lives through education and leading into their careers to the absolute top of their aptitudes and capabilities. Third, there we really feel expressed, there is openness to change in the spirit of finding improvements for all students, meaning that all options, even some of those more challenging conversations, need to be on the table for discussion. And then we heard, really it was a validation of the design of this process and appreciation, but an insistence that students, staff, and community are involved authentically in the decision-making process. So these four- So these four things really have been our, our guiding light as we step through the work. During this timeframe, also the, in partnership with your communications team, there is a new page, um, or series of pages on the F, or the ccst.net website that capture all of the information central to this work. It goes over the purpose and process of the work, as well as links and calendar of community events. It has a transparent document repository, meaning that all the materials that were presented are loaded there and available for anyone who cares to read them, as well as interactive data dashboards, and a lot of the imagery you're going to see tonight are from the sorts of content that are available that you can interact with, do filtering and slicing and dicing of the data. Um, we did use this as a landing zone to send people to links to the survey that um has now closed, and we're going to share some of the findings with you. Um, but those were available both in English and Spanish. So let me speak a little bit about the survey. The, the post, due to the timing of this fast-paced project and the posting times for getting the materials to you as the Board of School Trustees, there is some content that wasn't prepared at the time of posting, but I will verbally share with you a bit about um some of the findings from the survey, and they really do underpin and inform those four key themes that I mentioned earlier. Um, the survey was open for a month, and we received a total of 1,860 responses. And I'm proud to say that it does have representation in the dozens, if not hundreds, in all 24 of the planning areas that we've defined for this work. And while we would love to have had more participation on the survey itself, it is consistent with what we see at this stage in this sort of process in our work around the country, and is consistent with other surveys conducted by Clark County School District. One thing that we're particularly proud of in this survey is that over 500 of the responses, uh, 30% of the responses came from students. So these are actively engaged students, and we hold their voice central to this work. A couple of points that we asked about, really just a general sense of perception. Um, there was more than two times the number of responses that feel safe and comfortable in your facilities than those who don't. That's great. That's something to celebrate. We'd love those numbers to be even higher, but it does show that the very basics of having a safe um and comfortable environment is fundamental for your facility strategy. When asked the same que, within the same set of questions, um, whether they are proud of the facilities though, that dips to 1.3 times as opposed to double, which gives a sense of that the very basics are indeed covered well. However, the sorts of things that bring excitement and pride might linger a little bit behind. This is something we can use to inform the work. Um, top priorities for improvements in the schools, number one was safety and security, as always universally is everyone's priority. Um, but number two and number three, and we split it in half, were access to a wide range, number one, um, number two, and then number three, depth of content areas. And this really underscores what I'd mentioned earlier, how students and learning are central to this work. We asked some strategic questions that will help inform when we explore different options and are drafting these for, to be presented to you and vetted through the community in the summer and fall. Um, the strategic questions really center around making change, and it's kind of a stress test to see where we're in it. Informed by statement to you that you do have stakeholders that are open to change, and some of the, the, I'll quote you some of the statistics from the survey, we asked the question, if you prefer to be in a well, a new, well-equipped facility further from home, as opposed to one that's close and convenient, um, and perhaps smaller, and there was three and a half times the support for the well-equipped facility. So definitely, facilities are motivating. We similarly asked the question, um, whether the quality of programs, both educational and student supports, are more important than size and convenient location of the facilities. That number of 3.5 jumped up to 4.3. So we took that to mean, great, the facilities are motivating, however, it's really about program, and really about access to opportunity for students that are motivating. So that definitely helps in how we, one, devise options, as well as um how we characterize and message them. A couple of the questions that kind of, we asked this question in a number of ways, just to make sure we're coming at it from different facets. And we did specifically ask for a slate of strategies for improving facilities and rightsizing them to accommodate the best opportunities for students, and one of those was support for rebuilding schools larger and closing and repurposing schools. Um, 70% support versus 10 against, which is rather a landslide, and we were able to disaggregate that by area, but it's a very consistent message to us. Now, this is in concept, right? This is not about my school, the one down the street, no specifics yet, however, it gives us confidence in designing options that might include some change um for consideration by the district and community. And finally, we asked for where um various considerations for consolidation, and the ones that really jumped ahead, just like in the previous set of questions, that facilities, facilities indeed were motivating, however, the better-resourced teachers, programs, et cetera, are what really drive and motivate folks. So moving on to um data collection in our process, we're complete as far as compiling all of our data. Um, that's both in terms of the facility condition assessment data, as well as the adequacy benchmarking of the facilities, um, and as well as demographic data enrollment projections. And the bulk of this presentation today is going to be going into details about those. So historical enrollment is depicted in this stacked bar chart here with different colors for the um in-county and in-district charters on top of the darker blue, which is CCSD schools. Now, while you were the largest growing school district in the country for decades on end, um, that did reach a peak in 2018, after which we've seen a 13% decline in enrollment in CCSDs um, schools. But the number of factors contributing towards it, just the pandemic was one factor, but the economy and housing costs definitely have a factor here, as well as, and the partners in your community that offered um alternatives in the choice, uh, in charter schools, in the area, they've seen growth at the same time. And just as a point of coincidence, this past year is the first time since the very first year that state sanctioned charters operated, that was 2005, in your area. This is the first year that you have fewer students in CCSD schools than that year back in 2005. We showed you a similar graphic to the next slide on page 11. Um, in the previous presentation in March, we showed the bubble of students, large cohort that's matriculating out of your system in this year and the next couple of years, followed by smaller cohorts that are following behind, which signaled to us that we expected to see in the enrollment projections, a decline. And again, due to the fast um moving nature of this project, we did not post within this the data around declining enrollment, however, we have since um received and validated the work of the school district and Mr. Baldwin's team that um shows that there will be about an 8% decline over the next five years. So that trend does continue. So the strategic implications of that data, and as, as planners for your facility infrastructure, um, are that, that there's going to be a renewed emphasis on um investing in your existing stock of facilities, and less so on growth. Now, there are pockets, um, particularly down in the southwest, up in the northeast, that tend to be, have some sustained growth and more um propensity for growth in the near future. We've seen decline at just about everywhere else in the district. We also see a strategic implication for opportunities, and I'm kind of signaling this with the responses we got with the um, the survey, that there are opportunities for trade-ups, and the opportunity to have fewer, newer, better-equipped facilities, um, as opposed to old facilities that are hard to maintain because there are many, many of them in close proximity that are under-enrolled. Moving on to slide 12, we did look at the, the family decisions that are happening by virtue of having every student's home address, as well as the schools that they are attending and analyzing whether they are attending within their own zone schools, or they're going to other schools. And we use that as a, an indicator for barriers to, to access to programs, as well as um choice and patterns that are out there, and that helped um inform, you know, the, the sorts of um opportunities we have to increase choice and opportunity and access to programs by looking at the locations of where they are. The next slide here with the, the dashboard image on there, this is available on the FMP um site, and this is where you can pull down any school and see of all students that attend each school, where they live, or what zones they live in, and those that live within that boundary, where they're attending. So you can kind of see the sorts of patterns, and it's a way for us to engage. This is something we've seen a lot of traffic on and a lot of interest. And this is just one example that's shown on the screen here. I will note also, with guidance and, and requests from administration to break out the transfers, not just between all transfers, but also to disaggregate those that are associated with choice programs, magnet programs, and we have done so as well. So this graphic would be updated with a little bit more granularity. Moving on to the next slide, we also analyzed the overlaying of your different attendance zones, which implies feeder splits, right? If you go to one elementary school, you might have a friend that goes to a different middle school than you do based on where their address is versus yours, and this is a symptom of a high-speed growth district, just like yours has had. Um, we see this as an opportunity in the FMP, perhaps to align these feeder patterns, remove um those splits within the schools, which can um have benefits to students, particularly in those transition years, when some of their peer relationships might not be disrupted if, if we look at those opportunities. Next, we look at school size and grade configuration. Again, another data infographic, we're benchmarking the sizes of all the schools at different grade levels, and we see a lot of um opportunities there. We see a wide range of school sizes across the district, which implies, or some questions around equitable access to programs. Those small schools, while intimate and close and convenient, can also have limitations as to the number of teachers that they have, just based on the funding formulas for staff. This also implies um lack of access to more, more programs, more classes, more subjects, and having a floor on the size of schools, um, with exceptions by geography, et cetera, is something that we're looking at. Also, at perhaps new grade configurations that might have benefits, like your um successful program at Joe Mackey. Next slide on um page 16 shows over time, the, the same enrollment that I showed you in a line graph earlier, but it's overlaid with the current capacity that you have in your permanent facilities, as well as portables. And clearly, when you see those dotted lines that are in excess of where we are with enrollment, it implies possibly some considerations. We disaggregated all that and broke it down by each school location and by grade level, so we could see um where the utilization sits. A number of things jump off the page for us as planners, that there is indeed, particularly at the elementary and middle school, surplus capacity, um, one, in portables, and perhaps opportunities to remove portables from your portfolios, restore the sites for outdoor learning opportunities, perhaps parking or other educational and community use, um, as well as surplus at the, in the permanent buildings, and that speaks to the opportunities, perhaps where there's a co-location of many, those dark blue wedges in the circles close by each other for opportunities for those trade-up scenarios we talked about. And that creates opportunities, perhaps with your assets, to um have more partnerships with either community partnerships or business partners, or your municipal partners to find higher and better use for some facilities, perhaps to provide services that are, that are needed in the area. Slide 18, um, we, we did do a peer review of your dedicated staff doing facility condition assessments, um, under Rick Baldwin's leadership, and Jessica Kreider, they do a fantastic job. The year in, year out, they look at one-fifth of the portfolio, so you're in a five-year cycle, measuring the condition and, and needs as far as maintenance goes with your facilities. We have a team that does that professionally around the country with school districts all over, and they did a peer comparison, and their findings were consistent with what your team did, and we're working with them on all the cost estimating. But it's something to pat yourselves on the back on. You have a great team, and they're doing fantastic work, and we deem that the data that they provided, um, with the sampling we did, is usable for our studies. Um, this is a similar graphic to what I've shared with you in our first presentation, but it shows a timeline of construction uh by square feet over the years. The one thing that jumps off the page here, a number of things. Well, the red and orange, those are your older facilities, that's about a quarter of the stock of your facilities are getting old, in many cases, and you've already started down a path of replacing systemically facilities that have served their useful life. That's something we, we foresee continuing, particularly as it could fuel some of those trade-up scenarios talked about. Another thing that jumps off the page is the large green wedge of that pie, that's nearly half of your portfolio, are your quote-unquote newer schools, or they felt newer not too long ago. But these are schools that were built in the 90s, early 2000s, and they're at the point where they need roofs, they need air conditioning. There's a lot of reinvestment that, you've had the benefit of new facilities for some time, but they will, they are showing their age, and certainly, a major component of this Facility Master Plan is just setting up a series of prioritized renovations and enhancements at those facilities. And slide 20, I'm almost done, guys. Um, we have a scatter plot here that shows the capacity utilization and the consist, uh, facility condition index on the Y and X axes, and each one of those circles is where each of your schools sits. They're color-coded by elementary, middle, and high school, but we use this when we filter it by geographical area, kind of as an indicator of the sorts of options that might be available. Couple things I want to point out, there's a dotted line at the .6 FCI. The district has had kind of a standard where candidates for replacement are the ones that have a higher FCI than .6. It means that you'd have to spend 60% of the cost of just replacing the whole building in repairs, just to get it up to like new standards. And I want to signal out also, I think it's Fremont and Woodridge, or Woodbury, excuse me, are the two dots that are at the far right of the screen there. Those are, that's one that has been replaced already, or on major investments, as well as one that is on the replacement list. It's just another indicator that your decisions you have made are wise and have been informed by um, by data in the past. Uh, we see that there's kind of two sections that are the ideal areas, the optimal areas we want to be, between 80% and 100% utilization, meaning that the building is, is efficiently used, so you don't have a bunch of ex, extra unfilled capacity in the building, nor is it crowded. Um, the district has had a practice, and this is common, um, to go above that through the use of portables and that kind of thing. And high-growth districts like you, it's absolutely normal to go up to 120%. But we can see on the slide here, is that over a third of your facilities are in that optimal range, in terms of utilization. It's just a matter of making sure we get those dots as far to the left as we can, meaning that they're in better condition through reinvestments in the facilities. And those that are above that line, that we find either redistricting or um facility improvements that can help bring the, the utilization down. A couple other points of analysis that are not in here but are complete at this point is looking at the various CTE programs, where they're located, to make sure that we find gaps geographically, so we can close those barriers to student access to opportunity. Um, we've also completed the facility adequacy assessment, which is a benchmarking of how well-designed, equipped, and located schools are. And um, those were used in our development of our options last week. And then also looking at those sister and partner schools, meaning those co-located schools that share a boundary, we've looked at those very closely as well. So look ahead into next steps in this process. Um, as I mentioned earlier last week, we started drafting those options. We're going to be spending the next few weeks getting those documented and shared back through the DPG. Well, I do want to share also, I mentioned the DPG is the group of operational education leaders. We had members of, from each of the five stakeholder advisor groups, both the students and adults present, participating in the process. They added tremendous value because of their, their local knowledge, really understanding the neighborhoods and communities that we're working in, and they in turn will be able to share back to their, their peers on the stakeholder advisory groups what they experienced in the process, how this was driven and informed by data and priorities and values, and not by politics or smoke-filled rooms and decisions like that. So looking ahead here, um, we're going to be back in front of you, um, first with the Bond Oversight Committee, but back to you on August 28th, and you'll see the categories of types of options that were developed, as well as all the specific cases where those are on the table. And these will be shared with the community, along with another survey, that unlike the last one that was conceptual in nature, this will get specific. It's going to be naming schools and what types of outcomes potentially could be on the table for them, so that community members can engage um and share their opinions. We always like to leave a blank option to be filled in with community members. We always like to leave a blank option to be filled in with community members, so they have the chance to share their ideas if they see something else that they want to put on the table as well. So at this point, we'll happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from trustees on the dais? Trustee Asparz Ostroffkin.
So I want to thank the way that we're doing things differently, and I want to acknowledge our leadership team, because we said we wanted to bring transparency and community voice. What I'm hearing is that we are doing all of that, and I love that the groups that are involved are inclusive of the parents, of course, the stakeholders, but the student voice that's coming in. And I think more of that is what we need to be continuously engaging. So to that, I have my question is this, those groups that you mentioned, would we as trustees be able to see who is on those committees, just so we have information, knowing, like representation between the districts? So could you provide who is participating in those stakeholder groups?
Trustees Asparz Ostroffkin, Brandon McLaughlin for the record. I want to say we did share that again, but it's been a while probably, so we can reshare it for sure, and go through trustees, the superintendent's office to get that to you.
If I could follow up?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you for that. And then because of the comments and the initial data that you're sharing about programming, it's glaring about some of those pieces that we need to really revisit. Some of our competition with our charter schools that we look around us are closing as well. So I'm curious to know if we're doing some kind of study to say what is the, what are the programmings that they offered, and maybe we could consider what possibly we're not including with those schools that closed, because those could be the programs we want to visit to fill those gaps. And then I think the last thing that I wanted to share was, there was some questions presented, was talking and listening. When you're walking buildings, you mentioned about the capacity of some of our schools is not utilized fully. So I'll give you an example scenario, because I was a former high school principal. They're very creative with their spaces, so sometimes they may, I know Rick is looking and smiling. So let's say they're utilizing a space for a partnership with a wraparound service program. My question is, is what kind of conversations are we having to say maybe, maybe we need to have a conversation about with thinking of utilizing it in a different way, so that we can make it instructional? And I don't want to take away the value of some of our wraparound services that are essential, and maybe they're in certain locations. So I guess what I want to say is, the question, I'm sorry, I'm rambling, how much autonomy will the building principals have in the decision-making of the spaces that they already currently have? Because if they're losing portables, then those teachers have to go somewhere.
I'll start it out, Brandon McLaughlin for the record. Definitely, I know there's, it's a hot topic that I'm not going to step on about school building autonomy, that's a whole other subject we could get into in this, but I think there is some things the team is learning about that utilization rate, and so, not to go technical, far-reaching on it, but I think there's a building utilization, that is how much that classroom space is being used for traditional instructional time. There's also occupancy, separate and apart from egress occupancy, but the community partner is occupying, say, what used to be a classroom for, say, communities and schools, that building, or that classroom is unable to be used for traditional instruction, right? But it's still counted in the occupancy, but not necessarily utilization. So we're trying to decipher a good way to calculate that. I think the team's made good progress on how we capture things like that, but we're definitely not done in how we analyze that. That's why we have some building principles on the various groups.
Thank you. Any other questions from the dais? Vice President Zamora, are you still with us? Trustee Dominguez?
I'm here, President.
Do you have any questions?
No questions, just want to thank the team. I know at the beginning, it was a little rocky with just the community and how we were advertising some information. I think it was a good learning lesson, especially for our new, you know, leadership and our new trustees, that our community does want to be involved, even though that I know some of the numbers didn't reflect that. But being just proactive us as a district to have that information public, I think was a really great move, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Hopefully, I have good connection. I did have a question as far as, and I appreciate all of the information, I know this took a lot of time. I wanted just a clarification on, they had mentioned for the survey that there was, the top, the top first item was safety and security, and then the top two was like a division of two and three. What was the division?
Paul Mills, Cannon Design for the record. We, instead of just saying access to programs, we actually split it up into access to a wide range of programs, as well as access to advanced courses or depth. So we wanted to see if maybe there's some relativity between depth and breadth.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification, and maybe this could be also a statement to everyone, and especially our new superintendent, is that the communication is so vital in how we're going to proceed in the future, and as far as how we are going to utilize buildings moving forward. And I think we need to be cognizant of how we communicate to our communities, and making sure that we're trying to do the best, in the best interest of our schools and our students, our teachers, and of course, our district, so. And then I appreciate all of the work you gentlemen did, this is a lot of data. I love a lot of numbers, and this is very extensive. I know it took a lot of work, a lot of brain power, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees Tori?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for this wealth of information. This is an incredible amount of data, and I really appreciate being able to dive into it. My question really is more a school staff question than for Cannon Design, but when students withdraw, do we have an exit survey to kind of, particularly in some of these, we're seeing that declining enrollment, to try to see what some of the reasons that they might, and see some trends thereof, why we're losing some students in those areas?
Brandon McLaughlin for the record, we can follow up with that. I think, I know which individual in the district would be best to answer that, but she's not up here with us.
Okay, thanks.
Paul Mills, Cannon Design for the record, we included two questions in the survey that might get into that space a little bit. We asked the question whether you did or do intend to stay in CCSD schools through graduation, and we followed up with the next question of the compelling factors that you factor into those sorts of decisions, and by cross-tabulating between whether you don't intend to come and what your motivations are. Sitting here, I cannot remember the exact things, but these are actually on the website in an interactive dashboard.
Thank you so much for your presentation. This is not an action item, so we're going to go ahead and move to public comment 4.01. I know that I had some individuals signed up in advance. There it is. So if I could have Ms. Annette Mims and Megan Wade, we have a podium here on the right and one on the left. Before we start, is there anyone that did not get an opportunity to complete a public speaker card? Now would be the time. Kaseen, that is closed. So Ms. Mims, I don't know, that's you. Okay, please proceed.
Okay. The Green Valley High School Band Program is an award-winning program, which has traveled nationally and worldwide under the direction of Ms. Cara Frelick. Our band director was taken away from the band without any communication to parents and students as to why this was happening from admin on May 27th. We're asking for our band director to be reinstated so that she can continue with the incredible opportunities and unmatchable education that she's planned for the students. Taking our band director from the students at this time puts the entire band program at risk, affecting our kids deeply. We're here today to ask for the reinstatement of our band director, Ms. Frelick. The planning for this year's marching show has already begun before she was taken. Staff, parents, and students were already getting started with props and planning the show. Student leaders were already picked for the year, there were already meetings with future gators to discuss what to expect. Now, every day that there is a delay in bringing her back, our students will suffer, and the program will not be the same. She not only teaches students how to read music, play, be a part of the team, but also incredible life lessons, how to speak to groups, how to speak to adults, how to hold yourself with respect and treat others with respect, how to be the best version of yourself, and she continues to give valuable life lessons to all her students. I personally have seen my son mature and grow in a positive way while taking part in this program. And I also get to see the pure joy on so many high schoolers' faces as they participate in the wonderful events afforded to them through Ms. Frelick's professionalism. Ms. Frelick gives countless hours to the band above and beyond what the call of her job title is. I can't tell you the number of times I drive past the school and see her iconic red truck sitting in the parking lot when no other cars are there. She puts her entire heart and soul into this program, and she's done everything she's done over the last couple of years without an assistant band director, and only the help of volunteers that can help her along the way with their time, our band family. By taking her at this point in the year, all it does is hurt the kids. Ms. Frelick cares deeply for her students, and she only wants them to be the best version of themselves. She cannot be replaced with just any random last-minute hire. These kids deserve the best. Please bring the Green Valley Band Director, Cara Frelick, back to the students.
Thank you. Ms. Wade, and then after Ms. Wade, Ms. Lynn Green? Yes, thank you. Ms. Wade, please proceed.
My name is Megan, and I am a student leader and upcoming senior in the Green Valley High School Band Program. I'm seeking today with a goal to get my band director, Ms. Frelick, back. She has shaped me into the person I am today. I have the confidence and skill needed to speak here today because of her. Throughout my high school career, she has helped me learn my music, shown me the potential I have and the value of hard work, and how it can change a person for the better, as well as the importance and initiative of needing to get work done early and efficiently. On top of all that personal growth I owe to her, she has also shown me the etiquette to speak to my peers and adults in a professional setting. I'm not an outgoing person and am normally socially awkward by nature, but because of Ms. Frelick, I know that speaking here today is worth the few minutes of nerves that it brings. As of right now, there is no program for me to go into my senior year of high school. It is nothing but uncertainty. Our senior year has already started. By this time last year, we would have already had instruments and musics for the summer to practice and start memorizing the hundreds of measures that we have to know front and back by mid-September. Our parents would have already started on plans and construction of our handmade props that our band parents volunteer their time and resources to make to bring the show to life. Every day, we don't get our band director back, put some music and education in jeopardy. I'm hoping to play in college. I need this year to not only get applying to college and letters of recommendations, but also to ensure that I get to be in the bands that I want to be. This directly affects my college applications. If this was a sport, the school would have already replaced the coach, and the team would already know who it is and have met them. This I know from personal experience, as I have had a different coach for each of my three years on the swim team. The football team has already started their conditioning for the start of their season to stay in shape. The same applies for band. If we practice, if we don't practice daily, we lose our skill, and we need to keep it to be able to play our music. Ms. Frelick is not only known district-wide, but also nationally in the world of music. She's taken her bands most recently to places like the beaches of Normandy and Carnegie Hall. She has shaped so many kids' lives and teaches us life skills that we would never learn otherwise. She deserves more than being a detention teacher. Please help the band and bring back Ms. Frelick as our band director and not as a detention teacher. I cannot imagine a band program without her in it, nor do I want to. We have all felt from our school admin this year that Ms. Frelick is the only one who listens to us. Now that she's been removed, we feel that this is our only option to come here today and hope that it makes that we are heard.
Thank you. Ms. Green, and then after her, Christian Whitaker? Please proceed, Ms. Green.
Thank you for the time tonight. Ms. Frelick is a well-known and respected band director in the community and country. People around the country have reached out about her removal as our band director and asking how they can help. She has touched so many lives, and we all just want her back at Green Valley School as our band director where she belongs. Ms. Frelick is a talented educator with a master's in music and extensively trained by the best of the best. She has always been a heart of education, oh, she has also been a Heart of Education finalist three times, as well as one New Teacher of the Year. For Green Valley High School, she led three concert bands, three jazz bands, jazz combos, marching band percussion ensembles, steel drum band, pep bands, band student leadership groups, all without an assistant. Ms. Frelick's bands consistently earned top honors in all areas and have traveled for performances in Rome, London, Vancouver, Ireland, Paris, Amsterdam, Belgium, Normandy, Chicago, Orlando, Colorado, California, Kennedy Center in Washington DC, and including a standing ovation at Carnegie Hall in New York. Her jazz bands have won two Downbeat Awards and have been invited to perform at the prestigious Monterey Next Generation Jazz Festival. These students are respectful while traveling and conduct themselves better than some adults. It never fails that our school is told by the host that they have never had a better-behaved group of teenagers, and all this is due to the leadership and direction of Ms. Frelick. A teacher who cares, a teacher who goes above and beyond her salary to make sure her students get the best education and experiences. A teacher that you read about, but might be lucky enough to have. On the day, on the last day that teachers had to be on campus, Ms. Frelick was informed she would no longer be the band director and would be moved to a non-band position. If the football coach was being removed, I'm sure the coach would have been notified in time to find a good job instead of waiting until after graduation to be told. Ms. Frelick should have been given that courtesy and informed in time for her to find a good position, as well as for Green Valley to find a replacement who is worthy of our students. For an admin to say that commitment excellence is as every other word, this is not a move toward that. We literally do not have a band program. Our kids are heartbroken, scared, and worried, especially our seniors who deserve to have an amazing senior year with a teacher they respect and love. The kids are responsible enough to know that change is inevitable. However, when CCSD struggles to keep good teachers, why are they moving a teacher like this away from curriculum she is trained for and extremely good at? Please bring our band director back, we stand with Ms. Frelick.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
My daughter joined the Green Valley Marching Band last year, and not only did she gain an instant band family, so did I. The way Ms. Frelick creates band culture and family is like no other experience I have had. Being the parent of a freshman student this last year really opened my eyes on how much a teacher and director really cares about their students. I had not experienced this personally since my daughter was in elementary school. Ms. Frelick has only ever displayed professionalism and the utmost care and appreciation for our students. My daughter was just getting started with Ms. Frelick, as this would be her sophomore year coming up. She was looking forward to another fun marching show in season. My daughter has thrived under Ms. Frelick's direction. She has become more outgoing and social, and she has learned what true hard work can accomplish. Then after school was already out for the summer, we found out through other parents that our band director was being reassigned to teach in-house. Our award-winning band director being forced to leave the students she cares so much for and does so much for. My daughter is confused and upset over the decision to remove Ms. Frelick as the band director at Green Valley, as am I. Ms. Frelick consistently goes above and beyond for her students, and it shows. We have still not been communicated to about this from admin. The only reason we received communication is because some of us reached out to admin and those above our principal. We want our band director back, our students are being hurt here the most. There is a lot that goes into a marching band season, more than I could have ever imagined, and it takes time, and that timeline started before school was even out for this last year. Every day we don't have her back puts us so far behind. Please bring back our band director, Ms. Frelick, please. I stand with Ms. Frelick.
Thank you so much. You must be Sophia? Please proceed.
My name is Sophia Prada, and I am the upcoming assistant drum major in the Green Valley High School Band Program, as well as an upcoming senior. I am here today to express my concern and disappointment with the decision to remove Ms. Frelick from the band director role and the lack of support from our school administration. Throughout my past three years in this program, Ms. Frelick has taught me so much, not only musically, but as a person. She has pushed me so I can reach my full potential, supported me, guided me, and most of all, never given up on me. She has helped me find confidence in myself. I would not be where I am today without her. Not only have we grown as musicians, but she has taught us valuable skills and lessons we will carry with us well beyond high school. The passion and love she has for this job is unmatched. Ms. Frelick has provided a safe space where students can come to play music while also being a family. The Green Valley Band represents our district on a very high level, and we would not have maintained this high level of excellence without her. The administration's late decision to remove her from this role The administration's late decision to remove her from this role shows they do not understand the downstream impact this has of the decision. Without our band director, this puts our fall marching band season in jeopardy and the only ones hurt by this are the students. As an upcoming senior, working so hard for three years, having a marching season taken away would be awful. We have all put blood, sweat, tears into this program and to have it taken from us our last year would be devastating. I am asking that the school board would please step in to reevaluate this decision and to please get our band director, Ms. Freilich, back. She is the definition of our school's motto, "Commitment to Excellence." Thank you.
Thank you. You must be Nicole?
I am Nicole.
Thank you.
So I'm reading the speech written by the Green Valley High School Band Drum Major, Morgan Nowinski. She's currently on a family vacation. However, she feels so strongly about the situation that she asked me to read this on her behalf, so I hope I can do her words justice. Going into my senior year, I was excited to experience everything my school and band program had to offer. This would have been my second year as drum major and I was genuinely excited to gain all the experiences that come with being a senior in the band program. However, after hearing news about my band director, Ms. Freilich, being removed from the program unwillingly, I am now terrified to see how our program will crumble and to have to watch something I love so deeply fall apart before me. As a leader, Ms. Freilich has shown me how to become the best version of myself. I now work hard at being a servant leader, just as she was, and doing things for others, not because I have to, but because I want to. She has helped put me on track to go to college and follow my dreams. She has shown me that I have a vision outside of what my family has wanted for me. I now want to become a medical administrator for the United States Air Force and I owe that to her. She has supported me all throughout my high school experience and I do not want to imagine my life without her in it. She is truly my hero. I look up to her in everything I do and quite honestly, I am lost. I do not know how I'm supposed to be the best version of myself when she brings out the best in me. I feel like all the support I have has been taken from me with no warning. To me, she was more than a teacher, she was a confidant. She was someone I trusted to help me through any situation in my life, no matter its affiliation to the program. She was always there. She has put confidence into me as a musician, conductor, and human being that I will cherish forever. However, most importantly, she believed in me even when I didn't always believe in myself. My message is simple. I want our band director back. Every day that passes without her only hurts me, my peers, and the legacy of our program. My final marching band season has already started. We had selected pep band music, were waiting for the approval of the marching band show, we were planning for band camp, but now all those plans are gone and slowly they are taking my senior year and the program with them. Please bring back Ms. Freilich, bring back my mentor, bring back my hero. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next, I have, I believe, well, I'm not going to even mess up the name. I'm going to let you say it. And then Maria, right after her, okay. Go ahead.
I'm here to address the board regarding the remarkable band director, Ms. Kara Freilich, and her inexplicable transfer out of the Green Valley High School Music Department. Ms. Freilich is an amazingly dedicated, talented, and accomplished high school band teacher. She's a published author of practical instruction for high school music teachers. Under her guidance, the band program has won award after award and have had opportunities that few bands get. Every year, under her tenure, they get consistent superior ratings at the CCSD Music Festival. Green Valley is also one of the top comprehensive schools with the most students selected to participate in the CCSD Honor Band. They're also the only CCSD school ever selected to perform in two different presidential inaugurations. All of these accolades and successes beg a question. Why, at the 11th hour, was she suddenly removed from her position of 12 years and reassigned to a non-band position? It can't be poor job performance. Even a glance at the band's department's excellence gives a lie to that reason. It cannot be child abuse. There are mandatory reporting laws and she would be placed on leave. And it certainly cannot be for the benefit of the band students because the precipitous removal of their band teacher has left them without a band director who should be planning the fall program now and preparing them for our August band camp, among other things. To say nothing of the fact that they have lost an all-star teacher who has catapulted the band to national prominence. They are now at an extreme disadvantage in preparing for fall performances and competitions. Students should have already been able to check out their instruments and have music to practice for the fall. As it stands today, nothing is happening to prepare for next season's show and our students will suffer from lack of preparation. So the administration's decision to reassign Ms. Freilich has nothing to do with the well-being of our students. Is it simply administrative retaliation against Ms. Freilich for which the students must now pay the price? Reassigning Freilich on the last day of her contract with zero communication to our students or parents has left students like my son at an extreme disadvantage for next year, to say nothing of what it's done to Ms. Freilich. We have missed deadlines for interdisciplinary, inter-district transfers and audition dates for art schools. My son has been a part of the marching band percussion ensemble, the top jazz bands, and the jazz combo for two years. He's planning on going to college to study music. Now, because of a poor administrative decision, his educational career will suffer a setback. He is an incoming junior, a percussionist, and a jazz pianist. As of right now, those things are gone. Bring back our band director. Help our amazing students to continue to flourish under her tutelage.
Thank you so much. Can you just say your name for the record?
Amma Trussell.
Amma Trussell, thank you, Ms. Trussell. Ms. Maria?
Good evening. I'm not a band geek, I did athletics. However, past two years, I like to think of myself as an honorary band geek. So I am standing here before you to call for the reinstatement of Ms. Kara Freilich. Freilich, sorry. She is a talented, award-winning educator. She leads three concert bands, three jazz bands, a jazz combo, marching band, percussion ensemble, including a steel drum band, and the pep band. My band kid has been in her program for the last two years and I've seen with my own eyes her absolute dedication and commitment to him and his bandmates and their success. As a result of such hard work and dedication, Ms. Freilich in the Green Valley High's band program has an impressive list of accolades and accomplishments. This band program is one of the top band programs functioning with one band director, just one. The jazz program, oh, did that one already, oh, no. The jazz program is one of the top in the country. The concert band has had straight superior ratings at CCSD festivals every year during her tenure. The marching band is one of the top-placing marching bands in Nevada and that's all done with the smallest staff. Last year, the marching band had the honor and privilege of performing at the D-Day Anniversary Celebration in Normandy. This is not something that just any band gets to do. Because of her diligence and commitment to this program and our kids, Green Valley High School is seen as a leader in the district, as one of the few schools, and one of the few schools to have top jazz, concert, and marching bands. So here we had a teacher running an amazing program for years, then suddenly she is reassigned to a non-band position. The reasoning behind that, we may never know, but here's what I do know now. As we speak, the band program is at a standstill. If none of this had happened, our kids would currently have their instruments. They would have already began the process of memorizing the music that Ms. Freilich requested from the music writer she has been working with for years. Ms. Freilich would then need to get together with her drill instructor, the color guard instructor, and the rest of the small staff to go over the show and start to design and build what would no doubt be something only she and her staff could do. Because guess what? They do it every year. Ladies and gentlemen of this board, would you believe me if I said that there was more? There is, but I only have 50 seconds. At this point, the more time we allow to pass without Ms. Freilich, the less time the students have to catch up. She's the only one that can make up for the lost time because her passion, dedication, and love for music, the students and their success, won't allow her to fail them. Reinstate Ms. Freilich, please and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maria, can you say your full name for the record?
Maria Mantenonja.
Thank you so much. Noah, you're next.
Thank you. For over a decade, Kara Freilich has been director of the band program at Green Valley High School. She has taken the band to perform at prestigious venues, festivals, and clinics. The top Linden Jazz Ensembles have only received superiors at festivals, the highest rating you can achieve. The band is built on a culture of family, excellence, and character that Ms. Freilich has reinforced every day she's spent as the director of the program. Several weeks ago, Kent Roberts, Green Valley's principal, unceremoniously removed Ms. Freilich from her position as band director and moved her to in-house suspension for next year. This decision was made suddenly, with no indication as to why it was made or what comes next. While I understand that these personnel issues are not public matters, what is a public matter is the fact that almost 100 students and their parents who have lived in or are currently being introduced to the culture of this program now have no idea what the fate of their program will be. At this point, there is no band program. Even if a replacement is found today, the marching band would not be ready competitively as usual because by now, the kids should have instruments checked out, be practicing show music, and parents should be working on props preparing for this year's show. This time last year, students were finding out about the show and what to look forward to the next year. They were looking at the music, getting excited about potential visual design, and getting ready for a new marching season. Today, those same students only know that their band director is gone and have not received any plan from Kent Roberts other than that he wants to hire a new director. I speak today as an alumni of this program to tell you that these students have lost one of the best teachers that I've ever had. A woman who never lied to me. A woman who desired to see me succeed. A woman who only ever pushed me and my peers to be the best people we could. This reassignment is held. A program that is built an international reputation will be left with no plan for the future and will surely suffer because of it. Bring back our band director.
Thank you. And Noah, can you just say your last name for the record?
Noah Kosinski.
Thank you so much. We have other people that have filled out public comment cards. Ms. Liz Becker, and then Dr. Kyle Rogers.
Good evening. President Bustamante Adams and members of the board and Superintendent Ebert. I would first like to say, kudos to all of you. I do not know your band director, but I feel like I know her now and I'm in this fight with you. So thank you all for being here. I would like to start my comments by thanking Assistant Superintendent of Construction Brandon McLaughlin for all of his work. I was going to put in a comment last board meeting, but I had to get home before public comment. Because of all of his work, CCSD met the deadline on May the 15th for a couple schools that added solar in the 23-24 school year and you're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars coming back from the federal government. And so that is why I'm here tonight. Also, congrats to new CFO, DeHaas. I'm looking forward to getting to know him. So I am commenting tonight and on behalf of PLAN, the Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada. I am their Inflation Reduction Act Campaign Coordinator. And so I've been working with the district and also with Washtau County School District as they install renewable energy projects that are eligible for federal funding. And that funding is part of the Inflation Reduction Act and it is actually in danger of being cut in the budget reconciliation process at the federal government right now. So the House version of the bill basically takes the investment tax credits for renewable energy and it makes it so that they cannot be used for new projects. They can only be used for things that have already begun. And the Senate is going to be taking up budget reconciliation in the next couple weeks and we have been in contact with senators across the country, talking to Catherine Cortez Masto and Senator Rosen, and making sure that they know that this is millions and millions of dollars that's available to not only schools, but also houses of worship, municipalities, and any nonprofit. And the money comes back as a check, so the district is going to be getting that check for those two schools that were already put in. There are at least three more, I think up to five more, that are going to be eligible that already have solar. And so I am here to say, please, reach out to who you can to get this money saved at the federal level because that's all coming back to the district. And as the new superintendent stated, we want to make sure every dollar of our tax dollars is being used for student success. CCSD spends $120 million on utilities every year. I would argue that producing your own power and not having to pay those utility bills is the thing that you can do that will save the most money for the district. And in addition to that, there is an all-in Clark County Sustainability Plan. I really urge the district to join that or to make your own plan so that you can plan out. Because as we saw with the presentation of Facilities Masters Plan, the 1990s and early 2000s schools are really the ones that should get solar because they're going to be lasting as long as the other schools have.
Thank you, Ms. Becker.
Thank you.
Dr. Rogers?
Yes. Dr. Kyle Rogers, the record? I'm here tonight to discuss a public records request I recently applied in and was denied. I put in a public records request for discipline data to show all sorts of data that is not available through your dashboard or any other place. It looks at the intersection of data, so black boys with IEPs, whether they're suspensions, or in-house rates, or RPC rates. Data like that is not available to the public. I was emailed and told that that data request is being denied for two reasons. One, the records I'm requesting do not exist. And two, the records I'm requesting are unduly burdensome. Which you might note, how can the records be unduly burdensome if they don't exist? Those are contradictory claims. And so I emailed back saying, no, the records I'm requesting do in fact exist. They exist in a database in CCSD, I believe it's Data Lab, and they can pull the data from that database. A Nevada Supreme Court case that I emailed them, it was Nevada-Purs versus the Nevada Research Institute in Nevada in 2018, stated very clearly that if there is information in a database and it can be downloaded from that database, that qualifies as a public record. It is not the creation of a new document, which is what CCSD is trying to claim in their emails to me that it is. And so I'm wishing to get those records because they are indeed public records. The second issue is they said that my records request is unduly burdensome. I'm asking for too much data. I asked for three years' worth of data. And so I emailed them back and said, okay, what is your maximum amount of hours that you allow for a records request to take in terms of labor? And how many hours is my request estimated to be? I then also cited a Nevada NRS, NRS 2390107, that states when a public entity denies a records request, they have to tell the requester what they could do to adjust the request, which is what I was essentially requesting. The email I got back from the CCSD Public Records Office was a copy-paste of the first denial. They refused to tell me how many hours they're allowed to put in for labor in terms of records requests. They refused to tell me how many hours my request is estimated to take. It was extremely insulting to get. We are hoping to see more transparency in the future from this new administration and that's what I'm hoping. I did email the superintendent. I know she's a busy lady, maybe it got overseen, I didn't get a response. I need you all to do what you can to support me. And one of the things I want to point out that you could do to support me getting this public records request and encouraging transparency is your public records policy has not been updated since 2007. If you go onto the CCSD Board Regulations website, that is the last time that policy was updated. And there have been several adjustments to what counts as a public record nowadays in terms of new electronic systems and such. And so that policy substantially needs to be updated to ensure that this doesn't happen. Other people who've been on the board longer, remember that this actually, the same exact issue happened to me three years ago with the exact same arguments. And once I made a fuss at a school board meeting, I got a sudden email saying, oh, you're going to get your records request actually. It was the exact same records request. Hoping to get your assistance, I'll be around afterwards if anyone wants to ask me questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katie, I think it says Matson? Okay, Katie, and then Ms. Binder.
Hi there, yes, my name is Katie Madison and I'm a director on the board of the Nevada Homeschool Network. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Nevada Homeschool Network, or NHN, advocates for the fundamental rights of parents to direct the education of their own child as they see fit, or children. We understand that there's been some issues regarding red-shirting and retaining students who end up wanting to play sports. NHN maintains this is not a homeschool issue and should be addressed statewide through the NIAA, which has the state regulatory power to do that. It should be addressed uniformly across the state through the NAC. That's because state statutes through the NRS give rise to the code through the NAC and govern the policies. Currently, policies are trying to be rewritten to accommodate this issue. NAC 385B already outlines participation rules, but it misses the opportunity to address gap years. And to paraphrase that, I do have them written out in complete detail if you want to see them side by side. But NAC 385B 708 allows for eight semesters of eligibility after entering ninth grade, but nothing on when a student must enter ninth grade. Point 770 addresses other aspects involving grade placement, but says nothing about voluntary gap years. 776 prohibits circumvention, but doesn't bar holding a child back for valid reasons. Nowhere do the codes regarding NIAA eligibility prohibit delaying ninth grade.[1783.31] Nowhere do the codes regarding NIAA eligibility prohibit delaying ninth grade. They only address what happens after they start ninth grade. If CCSD believes this practice should be restricted, we respectfully urge the board to pursue change at the state level, not through local policy. From there, policy can follow. If NIAA codes are ever updated with verbiage to reflect gap year specifically, families will adapt. But decisions like these must remain between families and the state, not driven by backdoor interpretations that cite kindergarten through second grade NRS to determine high school placement. You can't possibly believe that by second grade, a child's emotional, physical, and academic development can be forecasted to pinpoint the right time when they, when they should start high school in all cases. So while NHN takes no position on gap years themselves, nor are we suggesting they're even lawful to regulate into the NAC, we are disheartened that CCSD's focus is even here to begin with, with so many urgent educational challenges within the district. Limiting parental flexibility shouldn't be a priority, especially when the system already struggles to meet the individual student's needs. This is a state matter, and until it's addressed at the state through the regulatory statutes or the NAC, it should not be assumed in local policy.
Thank you so much. Ms. Binder, and then to close this out, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. So I'm gonna put a different hat on. So I'm going to read this on behalf of the Nevada Governor's Council on Developmental Disabilities, and I'm unsure if the Clark County School District is a recipient of funds from the U.S. Department of Energy, but they're doing kind of like a one-under right now, and they are bypassing a lot of the ways that they make rules. We have comments due by Monday, June 16th, and what they're doing is they're trying to administratively remove the 504 requirements from facilities that were built after 1980. And so without this going through the proper channels and protocols at the federal level, they're trying, they're claiming, the DOE is claiming that it's only going to pertain to private entities, however, we know that that's a slippery slope. For those unfamiliar, we have, sorry, the 504 regulations state that buildings constructed or altered after June 13th, 1980, that house programs that receive federal financial assistance must be readily accessible to and usable by handicapped persons. In order to be considered accessible, buildings have to meet the uniform federal accessibility standards. So our Governor's Council, not just here for Nevada, but nationally, have submitted comments, because it's a very slippery slope, that once they start removing those types of regulations, even on the face of it being for private sector, that if the rule is removed altogether, that that could adversely affect our children in our facilities as well. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and if anyone's inclined to submit their own separate statement, just let me know, and I will send you the link. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binder. Mr. Gomez.
David Gomez for the record, President of Nevada Peace Alliance, former president of WACA, former deputy director of education, deputy director of education for LULAC, I'm tired, father of seven, many other titles. I remember when Rosa Parks gave me a title and put my name on a wall in Montgomery, Alabama. It's amazing when I see parents show up to fight for things that matter to them, but what matters to me is that FMP. Obviously, we couldn't talk about it, but I just wanted to tell you that Canon Designs, Gary, if he can take it from me, he can take it from anybody, because I have given that man a run-up to the wall, and I've given him questions that he had to come back and give me answers. And that team has done an excellent job at answering a lot of my questions and trying to make sure that my questions are asked, are answered, that are asked. When I look at some of the things that I see going on, I'm, I'm moved with people that show up for a teacher, but we might have to close some schools down, and some of these schools we have to worry about, you know? And I've had my run-ins with Kent Roberts, and I remember, I think it used to be Jeff Horn, it was there prior to that, and the first class, graduating class of Green Valley, I think was in 1993, if I'm not mistaken. But, you know, the things that I have to deal with, being a business owner, being a parent, being a nonprofit president, being a liaison for different things, I'm looking at some of the things that people are really not looking at and considering. We need a lot of help. We need people to understand that what affects us in the middle of the city, which is West Las Vegas and East Las Vegas and part of North Town, does affect the outside as well. Is that gonna overpopulate some of the schools? Is it gonna cause different issues? What's gonna happen? So, you know, I, I get it, people are here to fight for the reasons of a band teacher. Yeah, there should be some explanations there for them, but at the same token, you know, we should always fight for the right things all the time. I get tired. I'm tired of coming in here arguing about the things that we need to fight for, but people sometimes tend to say, I'm busy. Well, I'm busy too. I own 12 businesses that I have to be present at, I'm the nonprofit president, and I have a lot of other things I have to do as well. But I make time for this, and I make time to be here so that people understand that if nobody stands up, who will? We need to all stand up all the time, and we have to stand up for what's right. And I'm letting you know that that team does an excellent job. I've had my run-ins with them, the FMP, I'm a SAG member, and I don't SAG, and I don't mean SAG like that, but, you know, I keep my britches where they go. My britches and my pants go where they're supposed to be at. But at the same time, you know, you gotta give it to them, they've been doing a really good job, and I've been giving them a really hard time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That ends our business item for 4.01. Now we'll move to 5.01, upcoming meetings of the Board of Trustees. The next meeting of our team is on June 26, 2025, at 5:00 PM in this boardroom. At this time, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Trustee Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we adjourn, I want to wish everyone a happy Juneteenth next week. It gives me great pride to tell you that. I also want to remind you that Juneteenth marks the end of slavery in the United States and is a powerful reminder of our ongoing journey towards justice and equality. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Trustee Henry. Trustee Beasadi.
Before I second the motion, I'd like to say Saturday is Flag Day, so happy Flag Day, and it is also our President Trump's birthday, so with that, I will second the motion.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Trustee, I mean Vice President Simora.
Aye.
Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy birthday, Mr. President. Aye.
With that, that motion passes six to zero. Thank you so much. Meeting's adjourned.